I'd like to call the April 13th regular meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Will you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of quick notes, as it's been announced already in the back. If you have a cellphone, please make sure that it is on vibrate or silence. Step out if you do need to take a call. The other thing that I would say is, for some of you that maybe have not been at a hearing, if you do wish to speak in regards to one of the, one of the pieces tonight, make sure that you go over, grab a piece of paper, and fill that information out, and then turn it in up front, because we don't want to miss you, and we want to hear what you have to say. So with that, we'll go ahead and get things rolling, and start off with roll call.
Hampi?
Here.
Stephenson?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Schlothauer?
Here.
Ward?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda this evening?
There's none.
Ceremonies, announcements, appointments, and/or presentations of any kind?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioners, any declaration of conflict this evening?
None.
No.
None.
Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to the consent calendar, Mr. Manley.
Yeah, item A is the meeting minutes from 3:30, 2021. Item B is the reasoned decision from the Nicholson Commercial Center subdivision, file number SUBD22021. Item C is the reasoned decision for the Black Stanley Range Zone Change, file number RZNE22021.
Okay, Commissioners, if there's no question, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Call for a vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Hampi? Yes.
All right, that brings us to the citizen issue. This section of the agenda is reserved for citizens wishing to address the commission on an issue that is not on this evening's agenda. Also, comments on issues that are planned for future meetings should be held at that time for that meeting. Did we have anyone? Mr. Flowers? We have a couple folks. We need to make sure that you've filled out your paperwork. Do we have a couple that have already turned in?
I don't think there's any.
Come to the front, and we'll go ahead and start with you then, Mr. Flowers. Please come to the front, state your name. You know the routine, sir.
Bob Flowers, good evening, councilmen and women, sorry. Anyway, this section is titled Citizens Issues. Well, I am a citizen of this city, and I do have an issue. This city of Post Falls is filled up.
John.
We're filled up with people. We're filled up with cars. We're filled up with thousands of apartment complexes. We're just plain filled. What we're not filled with are the schools for these children to go to, the police officers to protect us from the, from ourselves, I guess, and, or the fire department to protect our homes. I would like you all, if you could, at some point in the future, whatever the decisions you have to make, that you think about this. This city is filled to capacity. We need roads. We need infrastructure to even handle the folks we have. We need to catch up with what we've been doing the last 10 years. And I'd like you to really think about that, because your decisions will affect the future of our kids, our grandkids, and for people, maybe even further than that. Give us a break. We're full. We don't need any more of anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Believe in the back. If you want to come front, state your name, address. Mr. Manley will reset the timer. All right.
Good evening, Council. My name is Samantha Stiglider. I live at 3338 North Knob Creek in Post Falls. I wanted to come up and ask you, I think, more of a question. I think that we all understand that Post Falls is growing extremely quickly. I'm very blessed to have been able to bring my family up here in the last three years, and we really love it. It's been a fantastic opportunity for us. It's a wonderful area, great people, but it is growing quickly, and we see a lot happening here of what we saw where we came from. And I'm curious as to what citizens who are not on a council or not directly involved or, like, employed by the city can do to have a voice, more than just coming and saying yea or nay on proposals. I know that, sorry, it's a little nerve-wracking being up here. I'm catching my breath for a second. To say yea or nay to some of the proposals, you have to do it based on the master plan. And if you don't particularly agree with the master plan, it's hard to state your opinion, right? Because if the proposal is not directly, like, in conflict with the master plan, how do you say that you don't want it to be approved if the question is actually, doesn't meet the master plan? So my question to you, and I don't know if now is the appropriate time to answer it, or when would be, if you could express to the citizens how best we could be involved with those plannings over the next generation or two generations, to really ensure that Post Falls grows in a way that we feel comfortable with, in a way that we want it to be. The small-town feel is fantastic. Totally understandable that it can't be kept perfect, but I would really like to know how to keep it the really lovely place that it currently is. So I think that's all that I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I would just touch base, as you're walking away, you can touch base with any of the staff, and they can give you a little bit of direction. Citizens that live in Post Falls do have the opportunity to apply if they are interested in being a part of a commission, for instance, Planning and Zoning Commission, Parks and Recreation, Urban Renewal. So you can pick up applications, fill those out if there's interest. Mr. Gillis will shortly be coming up and presenting some information about the master plan. In the midst of that, there was a whole bunch of opportunity for the community to come in and give input. So I would definitely touch base with the staff, but there are definitely options, and we always encourage citizens to get involved at every capacity.
Can I respond to you by saying that I've been to the city twice, and all that I was told was to come and raise it as a citizens' issue? I was also given that response by the first person that I talked to.
We'd need to have you come up, just have you come up front and just say that one more time.
I've been to the city twice. What I was told was to come and raise it as a citizens' issue, and the first person that I talked to about requesting a crosswalk, I was told to bring it up as a citizens' issue. I think Mr. Paulus, is that how you say your last name, perhaps? I had the opportunity to get a face-to-face with him and figure out how to do it, but it seems like maybe there's not a lot of information with all of the employees at City Hall to give that guidance.
Well, I'll tell you what, I think when you walk in the back, there's a gentleman, Mr. Seal, that's standing back there that can probably give you some information.
Okay.
Yes, he just gave me the scout's honor that he promises to have that, so.
Okay, thank you.
We appreciate that. All right. Seeing nothing else, do we have any unfinished or old business, Mr. Manley?
There's none.
Then that takes us directly to our public hearing. Again, want to stress that if you want to speak or want input in regards to the hearing tonight, make sure you fill that paperwork out and turn it up up front. With that being said, we will go ahead and open the first one, and that is the adoption of the 2021 City Center Master Plan update. I believe Mr. Gillis is going to be presenting. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Commission. I was told John was going to do a quick introduction, but I can take it and run if you'd like.
If you're comfortable. I was just monitoring how the transition was happening. It seemed like it was going pretty fluid.
Okay. I don't know if this is up and running yet, but.
Did I ruin this?
I think there was just a reiteration that there was extensive public outreach with this, and this is a follow-up to a series of workshops to kind of conclude that whole activity with this resolution.
Just to make sure this, the home audience, I assume, can see this, will be told if they can't? Because it's online, okay.
Yes.
Well, good evening again. My name is Matt Gillis with Welch Comer Engineers, and we are at the tail end of the City Center Master Plan addendum. Director Seal asked me to give a very brief presentation, because in theory, you probably remember, we talked about this for 90 minutes about a month or two ago. Feel free to stop me at any point, but I'm going to run through pretty quick, just hit the highlights, and then I'm happy to answer any questions. Well, we'll start by the city center boundary. The, is there a laser on here? The dark boundary, if you follow here, that is the old or current city center boundary. That coincided generally with the urban renewal boundary that just sunset, that just sunsetted. The new boundary is, this is actually a red color. It's larger, specifically, it's larger to the east and to the north. The thought there was, and we got a lot of feedback from staff and primarily the stakeholders, which I'll get into in just a moment, that city center is larger than that. It does go north of I-90, and so that's why we're showing a slightly larger boundary. Originally, in 2005, the city center spent a lot of time, a lot of money, I'm sorry, the city spent a lot of time, a lot of effort on that original master plan. And it's a great document, but things change over, over time. One of the outcomes of that document was a list of actions. There were certainly goals, and I won't go through all these now, but there were goals that formulated an actual project list. And I think it was a list of 25 projects. Not all of them got done, but a lot of them did. So City Hall campus, where we're at now, that was a big deal. Chamber of Commerce building. The Fourth Avenue Spokane to William was a couple blocks, the demonstration project that was done, I think, in 2006. The year after, Frederick and William, both from Fourth to Railroad, those were both done as a revitalization with parking, sidewalk, lighting, those types of things. Then the Centennial Trail, that same year, the Centennial Trail, Trailhead Parking Area, very popular, that was done at the same time. Then a few years later, the Spokane Street Revitalization Project was done. We were, we were limited on funding. We wanted to be able to reconstruct the street, because it was in rough shape, but we worked with what we had for that revitalization. As part of that project was the crossing of the, the Centennial Trail crossing of Spokane Street, made that safer, with some pedestrian beacon lighting and some texture changes in the concrete there. And then just a few years ago, the city was able to finally complete the Spokane Street and Mullen Traffic Signal Project, which was a big deal. So even though all the projects weren't done, the fruit of some of this, at least part of the reason that we're seeing success are these projects. You've all seen it. We're seeing the restaurants, the businesses come in. Probably isn't as swift as many of us would like, which you'll see from some of the public testimony, but it is happening. So there is some things getting done. The, the purpose of the addendum specifically is not to redo the entire master plan, because, as I mentioned, a lot of good material is, came out of that, and it's still applicable today. Rather, the purpose of the addendum is to reach back out to the citizens, because things have changed. 15 years, 16 years is a long time. Things change, demographics change. Talk to a new group of stakeholders, and by stakeholders, we mean people that are leaders in the community, people that are plugged in, and those that care very much about our city. Take that information, work very closely with staff to develop a new and improved action item list. So, so new things we need to do in city center to try to move the needle on commerce and success in the downtown area. What it doesn't cover, and what John and I have talked about in the past, other things that need to be addressed are maybe another look at the SMART code, potential zoning, and land use changes, and then finally, potential overlay districts, where there's specific sub-districts in the city center area that may have slightly different development rules. So I went through this very slowly when we met a couple months ago, so I'll click through these pretty quickly, but because of COVID, we had to come up with a different way of reaching the public. We couldn't get together and have, you know, 150 people tell us what they think. So we developed an eight-minute video that you probably all saw, that explained the original 2005 master plan, explained the purpose of the addendum, and then asked a series of questions of the public. So we armed them with information, we told them what we were looking for, and then we asked them a bunch of questions. So the first question was, how do you feel about that original plan? And what we meant by that is, are we on the right track? Is this city center down here, and do we want to develop in a certain manner? Generally speaking, the, most of the people felt we're on the right track. But when we asked the second question, should the vision change, we got what was seemingly a conflicting answer. But what, what I'm not showing, what we had access to was some commentary. So people were, were excited about the vision, but frustrated about the progress. So they like where we're going, but they just want to see more happen more quickly. Third was, do you like wide sidewalks? And as expected, yes, people liked generally a wider sidewalk. People feel safer, a little better access. Are carefully placed seating areas and street furniture important? So benches, bike racks, trash cans, those types of things. And again, generally, we've got a heavier group in support. And I should say, before I go any further, that I think we had 164, 165 respondents, which is pretty good for a public process. And that was all done through the city's social media platform. How important is mixed use? People say yes. Mixed use is important in city center area. Is wayfinding important? And by wayfinding, that's, how do we get around? Is there some coherent and simple and themed approach telling people how to get from here to there in our city center? So City Hall's this way, Camelan Park's this way, Falls Park is that way. Not necessarily for us locals, but for our visitors. Oh, and yes, the people think that is a good idea. Is a common theme for downtown decor important? What we meant by that is, should some thought be put into how it all works together? Do the lights and the benches and the bike racks and the garbage cans, do they generally work together? And yes, that makes sense, as to be expected. We talked a lot about this one at the workshop. Are central gathering places important within a city center? We didn't ask them, what specifically do you think a gathering place should look like, because there's, there was some debate on that. But is it important, from a cultural standpoint, for citizens and visitors to be able to gather in the city center area? That was probably our strongest support question. Question with the strongest support. Is public art important? Again, generally, people agree it's important, although there was a lot of commentary that it should be carefully selected, so it doesn't get too crazy. And then finally, this one's a little bit of a mouthful, but do city centers and mixed-use development areas require diversified housing options at higher densities? So a mixture of housing that's dense in the commercial area to make it successful. So do we need a lot of people in our city center area to support the commercial part of our city center? Do you want to add anything to that question?
No, I think you summed it up about perfect.
Okay. So that, that goes through just a very quick summary of what we heard from the 164 or five general citizens that responded to the Facebook video. We also reached out to stakeholders, and this is a brand-new stakeholder list. When we did this in 2005, a very different list. Again, people plugged in and influential in, in our city. And we asked them several questions. The first one is, in your view, what are the strengths of our city center right now? And I think every one of them said, well, our natural resources are our biggest strength. Access to the river, our parks, the falls, we should be capitalizing on that. We're starting to see some things. Whoops. Restaurants coming in, that, that is helpful. One of the, I think the second most popular amongst the steering committee members regarding strengths was the streetscapes. What I mean by streetscapes are revitalizing streets strategically. Fourth Avenue, Spokane Street, Frederick and William, those types. These folks thought that was very important. And public art must be selected carefully. Weaknesses, I think most of us would probably have said very similar to the stakeholders, there's a lack of cultural identity in our city center. And geographically, there is a lack of geographic knowledge amongst many about where our city center is, which is why we're standing here, trying to get some momentum. Pedestrian connectivity, primarily east of Spokane Street, was a concern. A lot of those streets don't have sidewalk now. This fourth point was, there was mixed feelings on the amount of multifamily in the city center amongst the stakeholders. Some thought it was critical to maximize that. Some thought it was critical to maximize the commercial. So it was kind of the chicken or the egg discussion amongst some of the members. And then I'll mention this a couple times, the, mainly the development community amongst the stakeholders was concerned about SMART code. I don't know much about SMART code, but what I gleaned from them is sometimes, in some situations, it's difficult to work within and maneuver within. So just a second look at that, they thought was important. Changes, what have we, what has changed since 2005? Obviously, the population. And then the other one, a few of them mentioned, were living wage jobs. It's tougher for people to get by. Are we on the right track? Generally, yes. This, this paralleled the sentiment of the public. Yes, we're on the right track, but things just don't seem to be happening quick enough. Again, SMART code was, was mentioned again. Consider taking another look at it and revising it. So what are the biggest initial needs? I heard both. We need, we need more rooftops, and we need more commercial. So there's a, you know, different, different opinions there. SMART code again came up. Continue with the streetscape improvements as funding is available, encourage the mixed-use development. And then in either 2018 or 2019, the city adopted the city center parking plan, which, in addition to the stakeholders, also identified a lack of parking, especially as we grow in the future. But the city's got a roadmap for that. And then the last two is a, because what's happening in parallel with the city center master plan addendum is everybody considering the, a new urban renewal district. And so is a new district appropriate? Unanimously, the steering committee members thought it was, but it should be slightly larger to more closely match with the new and proposed city center boundary. And then the final was, are we ready for a downtown business association? I think everyone, again, this was unanimous, hey, that's a great idea, but we're probably not at critical mass yet to where that would be effective or useful. So yes, but maybe we're too early. So as I mentioned, the action item list that was developed in the first, the original master plan, we addressed some of that. So we took what hasn't been addressed. We listened to the public, we listened to the steering committee, we worked very closely with staff to, to develop a new list and prioritize that list. And so when we throw all that, all those ingredients in, we are able to develop this new list, and we decided to tier it. And generally speaking, tier one is a higher priority than tier two, but that doesn't necessarily mean if the city somehow came in to funding of $1.2 million to build a gathering center, it doesn't mean it can't rise in priority. This is just general. And this was, this was necessary to help the city's consultant on the feasibility study for the urban renewal district. That helped Olivia with, capture some of these costs. So that was a quick snapshot. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I, I didn't want to just repeat what we, what we did for 90 minutes two months ago, but I'm happy to elaborate wherever.
I have a question. So I agree 100% that, with the sentiment that we are on the right track, and I think we all want kind of the same thing. We want to have a downtown area. And it sounds like that's been reiterated by your stakeholders and your public comment. And so my question is, what's the result of folks conveying that? Do you say you reordered some of the projects here? What's the, what's the, what are we going to do now that we all agree? What are we going to do to try to kick it in gear?
I think one example is the, I kept hearing streetscape improvements. So we need sidewalks. We need a place to park. We need our street to be illuminated, and it needs to have some type of coherent look to it, and well-thought-out look to it. And so one of the, one of the big ones is, it's a big-ticket item, but this is spread out over years. So it's, oh, that's, so that's the parking plan, but really, that's implementation of streetscape improvements. So you take, the city is blessed with wide right-of-ways, and so we take an 80-foot right-of-way, and right now, it's, you know, 22 feet wide. And at some point, as funding is available, you, maybe you still have two lanes of traffic, maybe some bike lanes, but you've got angled parking and some nice wide sidewalks, and a place to store your stormwater, a place to put your lights and benches, those types of things. So that, that was a big one. Others are, as the Idaho veneer site continues to redevelop, that's an opportunity for the city to capitalize on that. So that's a high priority. So a lot of these infrastructure items are, rose to the list pretty quick. City staff may be able to speak to some of the details a little more, like the McReynolds connection and the Esplanade improvements, if there are specific questions on that.
I know the list also helps with, if there's grants available. And so having a, some sort of list of projects within the master plan, we can cite as substantiating the need for that within that grant. Additionally, some of these other items that they're coordinated with urban renewal reinforces the need for some of those improvements, because they're on the list within the city center master plan as deserving some sort of financial collaboration. I see Bob up there, maybe he wants to add more to it as well.
Bob Seal, Community Development Director. And yeah, John kind of put it pretty, pretty well. Nice job, thank you. I don't really need to be up here. Anyways, but in reality, it really is a guide, you know? It is something that, you know, when we think about our downtown, this is what's describing it. You know, the city doesn't, we don't have buckets of cash sitting around to do anything. If we happen to find a little bit of money, we can put it towards these projects. Urban renewal can potentially in the future, if it's, that district is established, can help fund some of these projects. The big part of it does come down to private development is coming into the city, and in order to go through that development, you know, as they develop their properties, they kind of look at this as the guiding process as well, you know? And our zoning code is rewritten as needed to, you know, be, help to implement this type of plan, as well as the comprehensive plan. So that's where a lot of it focuses on. And this, again, is the vision for our downtown city center area. But as John noted, you know, if we want to go for grants, we need to kind of have it in these plans. That's one of the key pieces. You got to show that you've planned for it, that it is something that you want to be doing. you've planned for it, that it is something that you want to be doing.
Well, something that I pointed out at the workshop that, and I think you guys are, are focusing on the right things here. But I just want to reiterate that there's a, there's a balance on some of these, and I think you guys played a very critical role. I think that the key to a downtown is business. I think people want, have to want to go there for a reason. Why are they going to go there? They're going to go for businesses. And you're the folks that are working with these people, that are coming in with their, their, their idea and their dream and their business. And, uh, we have to make it fit down there. And sometimes it's, uh, we have, uh, big right-of-ways, but those are on lots that individuals own that they might want a business on. And so if they're, if we're going to take the street, and we're going to make it a little wider, and put some backend parking spots, and it's going to make a commercial, a lot that can be commercial smaller, I think we have to, we have to, we have to think about whether or not that impacts the ability for somebody to have the very business down there that we want, that, uh, the whole reason that we have sidewalks is to bring the people.
Absolutely. And so, I mean, the thing that you, we do, we already have right-of-way established. So, yes, in some areas within the downtown, people are parking on what looks like gravel or lawn. That's part of the right-of-way.
I get it.
So that's ultimately part of the city property. So what happens is that the road gets developed out to those outer limits.
I get it.
With the sidewalk and swales and the trees. And so we have to take that into consideration. And again, development is, we don't have control over who comes in and wants to spend their money. You know, we do work with them to create the best possible plan for their site that they're working on in order to accommodate their needs, as well as the city's needs. And we do have a big developer working on the Idaho veneer site. We're going to be seeing that start to change this year. We've got developers looking at the, at the landing site. Those are nearing agreements. Nearing. Unfortunately, we don't have control over things, we're trying to work with them. And as we see those come about, we'll start to see, again, more interest in the downtown area as it starts to spread away from, or towards the center, you know, moving away from Spokane Street and Idaho coming together. You know, the old saying used to be, you know, growth follows pipe and pavement. Now we have to look at this as, um, you know, growth or development will come to where they see an aesthetically pleasing area. You know, we've done a lot to Spokane Street. And so that people have see, do see that and are attracted to it, because it's, it's a nice walkable strip now, as opposed to what it was, you know, a number of years ago.
Yeah, I thought, Matt alluded to chicken, Matt alluded to chicken and the egg on, do people come down there because it's, or want to have a business there because it's aesthetically pleasing? Or do they, people come down there because there's a business that's, that's down there? I, I believe the business leads the way. And so, I think you guys are on the right track. I just want, I just want to reiterate that I do think that you guys have a lot of input. And when these people come in, I think we got to do everything we can to encourage the businesses, and that'll take care of everything.
That's all we're doing.
Well, I think the key is requirements, the design standards, and those pieces are in place, so.
Bob, really quick, if I'm not mistaken, I think if I'm, if I were to put this in a nutshell, it really just looks like the vast majority of what we're doing tonight is looking at this resolution to essentially take that, those four tiers of projects and say, yeah, these are the things we want to focus on. Is that?
Basically, basically, you're acknowledging the fact that out of the public process, you know, the addendum did find that, for the most part, we are still consistent with the original plan. However, there are priority projects that kind of filtered to the top that may not have been priorities previously. Again, looking at the values, typically, within a master plan like this, we don't get values. But because we're looking at a renewal district, you get values along with it. And so, yes. And again, you know, these tiers were kind of based on that urban renewal district process. So tier one really does kind of reflect where we anticipate seeing development happen in the near future, as opposed to potentially the other ones. And again, a lot of this is, is just guesstimation, where is development going to happen? Or how do we prioritize projects that will help to influence development within the downtown?
Sure. And as that goes, it, it's actually really nice to have a list of projects where we can always talk about, hey, we're going to make the city center better. But now we've got a pretty good concrete list of, like, hey, this is something that, you know, signal at Third and Spokane Street. You know, public art, things like that. Those are, those are things that can have a big effect, and it's good to see them.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, just one, Bob. Outside of all these projects, are we doing anything more or less like advertising to try to, like, physically go after businesses to get here? Specifically, go after certain businesses or types to get them here?
I mean, we, you know, the city administrator and I do work on economic development. We do work closely with Coeur d'Alene Economic Development Council. We work closely with job, you know, Department of Labor. But honestly, finding the time in the extremely overloaded department that we're in, in the city that is growing with, you know, what we do, what we can, you know, we don't necessarily reach out to, you don't, we don't do cold calling necessarily. And having worked with a lot of different economic development directors and departments in the past, cold calling is, while maybe you get something sometime, it's not really worth the effort that it actually takes to do that. We focus on, a lot of it, you want to focus on retention. You want to keep the businesses that you have here, you want to keep them happy, you want to keep them in, in good places. You know, so we work on that, and we work on, you know, again, helping ones that are interested in coming to the area. You know, we bend over backwards for, to work with and communicate with businesses that want to come here. And work with them to find land to purchase that isn't on the market, because there's only so much available on the market. You know, so we're, we try and coordinate all that. And it's, it's, it's a process. We do what we can.
Well, thank you. That's, that's really what, what we're after, I think.
Absolutely.
And I would say that being in an opportunity zone has been a big marketing aspect. Most everybody that's I've talked to recently, looking at sites outside of veneer and outside of the landing, are looking specifically because of the opportunity zone.
Mr. Gillis, you had, there was, uh, some notes on there about a downtown association, that it was a little bit early. I know there had been some conversation with that. Is indeed that a possibility as far as downtown association, once that's established, that there can be a certain degree of marketing and/or recruiting done by that particular organization to ease some of the burden off the city?
I, I would imagine that'd be their role, yeah. And I think, I think your, your urban renewal agency is, is also.
Absolutely.
Serving that role.
And the Chamber of Commerce.
And the Chamber of Commerce. So what you're telling me, it's everybody working together? Okay.
Why do you think I have so many meetings every week?
I understand. Any other questions, comments?
Looking for an action to recommend approval of the resolution, I believe, Field, does that sound right for the coverage?
Yeah, it's a, again, it's just a resolution, so, um, it's similar to any action by the, by the commission, so.
Do we have any public comment on this particular item?
So, not in person, and not anybody that really wants to speak on Zoom. They just wanted to note that we have... See, we got two. Three. So we have three people in opposition of this city center master plan.
That do not wish to speak?
Right.
Okay.
And we have about four that are neutral. They don't want to speak either. They just wanted to know.
Any in favor?
None in favor.
Okay. Where there is no, uh, comment, I'm assuming, is there any need for any rebuttal? Anything else that we need to add?
You could open it up for public comment if you. Yeah, this is not a public hearing, is it? It is listed on the agenda. As a public hearing, so.
Okay.
If you wanted to open it up for public comment, you could.
Okay. Do we need to have them fill out the paperwork, or can we just go by name and address?
You could go by name and address. I, I would probably prefer the paperwork, though.
So would I. If there is anybody that wishes to speak, uh, in regard to the master plan and the resolution, that will be taken forward to the city council, you can fill that paperwork out either against, neutral, or in favor. If anybody wishes to speak. I see no one getting up. Okay. So there'd be no need for rebuttal. Any other questions before we close things out for staff? Mr. Gillis? No? Last chance. Okay. We'll close it out. Any comment from anyone? Thoughts?
Pretty much already said everything I had to say on it.
Okay. Any other dialogue?
I mean, I think they're, they're focusing on the right things. I think there's a big, a lot of it, uh, I think that the staff can have a lot of input here and help steer this in the right direction. And I think we just got a, it's been, it's been a long time coming, but I, hopefully we can make some progress.
Agreed. Okay, if there's no more comment, I would, uh, look for a motion. We would need to move and vote to move this resolution forward for approval, for city council approval.
I would move to approve resolution number P and Z 21 dash blank, blank, blank. I'm going to assume it's 0001, if you're using our.
It'll be one, yes.
Dominoculture, um, as presented in the staff report for, and relating to the proposal to adopt the 2021 addendum to the city center master plan.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion or a second? Call for a vote.
Campy?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, so moved. Nice work freestyling that. That was, that was good. All right, we will move on to the second, uh, public hearing, and go ahead and open the LaSalle annexation. Mr. Porter, it is all yours.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ethan Porter, one of the planners of the city here at Post Falls. I am here to present the LaSalle annexation, um, case file ANNX-2-2021. The owner is Ms. LaSalle. The applicant is Dobler Engineering, who I believe is here tonight. And they're requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, review the annexation request of approximately five acres, and to make a recommendation of approval for the proposed single-family residential R1 zoning, um, designation to city council. Here you can see that the map on the screen is, uh, the project location hatched in red, north of Prairie. Um, it's directly across Trinkle Meadows subdivision, and that was approved previously, I believe, this year. Um, so you can see it there, and Prairie is a principal arterial, and then you can see to the east here, that's the Chase and Prairie roundabout as well. So, just to give you context. Uh, looking at the current land use on site, it is a large lot residential home within Cooney County. Um, there's no significant topography or vegetation issues on site that, um, causing issues or potential issues for the future. Um, the water provider here is East Green Acres Irrigation District, and the sewer would be provided by the city of Post Falls. Um, here you can see the zoning map on the screen. Um, we can see, like I mentioned before, um, I'll have a slide later in this presentation that it kind of highlights more of the subdivisions around, but you can see R1, um, to the south, um, which is Trinkle Meadows subdivision, and then to the east along Prairie, south of it, uh, you have Quiet Ridge as well as an R1, and then the surrounding of those is R1S and county lands. So... Here you can see that the, um, parks map provides, um, it's a little difficult, and I'm sorry for that, but you can see right here, this boundary is a park, um, park mile buffer boundary, saying that it's within the service, serviceable area of parks within a mile. Um, I kind of blew it up, and you can see the project location in blue there, that kind of where it stays, or where it stands. There's a little green kind of heat map indicator right there, north. Um, that's just a potential, um, it's a target area for a potential future, uh, park there. So somewhere in that area, north of Prairie, Parks Department has identified a future park there that's going to be needed. So here's the kind of descriptor and area context, I guess, of the surrounding subdivisions within the city. You have Air Relief Estates, Trinkle Meadows, Quiet Ridge, and the Craftsman at Meadow Ridge. Um, kind of I put the, uh, density with them, so you can kind of understand and see. Um, within R1, you have five units per acre. Um, so it's pretty typical, I believe, the Craftsman Meadow Ridge is, um, along that as well. LaSalle annexation doesn't have a subdivision to go with it yet currently, but, um, I would suspect that through some discussion, they're going to be right around the Trinkle Meadows density in the future when they go to develop this and subdivide it as well. So, just to give you context, this is kind of what you're looking at for the area near Prairie. Um, here's a picture of the site there. You're on, that's a ride on Prairie, looking north at the site, um, and directly south is that Trinkle Meadows subdivision. So you can see it's large lot residential, a lot of open land, no issues with vegetation, so. Um, looking at the zone change review criteria that's required for annexation, we have consistency with the future land use map. Uh, the upcoming slides, I'll show you, um, the future land use designation map, and, and how that's applicable, as well as with the goals and policies. I'll explain, expand a little more on that in the upcoming slides as well. Um, the third review criteria is looking at the zoning, um, making sure that we're considering street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans, and geographical features as well. Um, kind of listed out within the staff report as well, but we don't foresee through this proposal any issues with the street classification. As I mentioned, Prairie Avenue is projected to be widened, or it's a principal arterial and projected to be widened to about five lanes, I believe, um, in the future. I don't know what time on that, and I would punt that, those questions to Rob Paulus in Engineering. Um, he'd be able to expand a little more on that. But traffic patterns through, um, an R1 zoning, we don't foresee any issues with that next to Prairie or right along Prairie. And the future land use designation, like I said, it will go into a little more detail in the upcoming slides. So, here you can see the future land use designation. Um, the blue is transitional. The yellow, light yellow, is basically low-density residential. That hatched red circle is a commercial node area, um, per the comprehensive plan and the focus area in this, in this, um, area is designated as potentially commercial node being there with high-intense uses. So, looking a little bit closer at transitional, what that means. Within the comprehensive plan, this designation basically is suitable for growth. Um, it's, the timing for that growth is undetermined, as it's transitional, so we're not really sure how that growth is going to happen entirely. Uh, but guidance can be located within the associated focus area, like I mentioned. And the focus area in this particular, for this project, falls under the Central Prairie focus area. And, um, it's hard to read here, but I'll read it to you, kind of what that focus area describes. Um, it says, "Future growth should embrace a variety of housing types and land uses, maintain quality standards, and provide even greater emphasis on pedestrian friendliness and connecting neighborhoods to community trails in nearby amenities. Upon development and impact fees and so on and so forth, you know, parks, impacts fees will be, um, collected at, you know, time of building permit. And eventually, this will connect in as the frontage improvement upon development of subdivision gets built out. And then more development along this Prairie Avenue will then essentially connect it to the Crown Point, um, community as well, and then all their connections in the park, and so on and so forth in that area." So, the focus area also supports provisions for a variety of housing types and densities, which would be this proposal. So it is in line with this focus area and with the transitional purpose. Um, looking furthermore at, uh, the zone change review criteria, uh, four and six really doesn't apply, it talks to commercial and industrial zoning, which this is not a commercial industrial zoning request. It's a low-density, which would be review criteria five. And so, the lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed farther from higher intensity, and urban activity. And so, currently, there's no urban activity here, and there's no high-intense uses, as we've seen and that I've shown. A lot of subdivisions, single-family homes are surrounding it, and then big lot subdivision, or big lot homes, uh, within Cooney County. Um, agencies that were routed were listed here, um, and then the comments that we received. It's Post Falls Highway District, they remain neutral, and they will review the alignment and spacing on Prairie Avenue. If the right-of-way on Prairie Avenue does not occur upon the subdivision and further development of the site. Looking at DEQ, the provided general comments for the time of construction, so it doesn't really apply to this stage right now, but when they develop the subdivision... But when they develop the subdivision, they had stipulations. Cooney County Fire and Rescue remains neutral on the proposal. And again, the transitional going, kind of back to that, I just want to highlight that, that transitional, future land use designation we could see in the future. Per the definition, you know, you could see more commercial right along Prairie in the future as that widens. It's more appealing to higher-intense uses. So I think that's something just to consider and to look at as, you know, as this does start to develop out here, we could see a mix of everything, so. Per the transitional focus area, so. I can entertain any questions you guys have for staff at this time? Do you have any?
Any questions for staff, including Mr. Paulus, that we need to address Prairie? Is everybody comfortable?
At this time, there's no set number of houses for the five acres?
Correct, yes. Just if they get the R1 zoning approved and you recommend it to council and council approves it, then they would be capped at five units per acre, per the R1 zoning. So that's their limit. And as you can see surrounding, like I showed that image, Tranquil Meadows and Quiet Ridge, R1 zoning, but they're all under three units per acre, so. Yeah.
I guess I'll just ask it, is, what's the roadmap for widening on Prairie? Because there is a lot of development going on out there.
Rob Paulus, I would ask him to expand on that.
Either ask now or later, so.
Right.
That's why I threw it out there, I figured it'd be better.
Members of the commission, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. As far as timing for when this section of Prairie Avenue would be widened, we're not positive. Our master plan shows that this would need to be widened by about the year 2035, so it's on our long-range planning. In the staff report, we had identified that in our modeling, we were showing that by 2035, the volume on Prairie Avenue in this section was going to be a little over eleven thousand. Typically, for a minor arterial, we're looking at traffic volumes more between twelve thousand, up towards about twenty thousand in volume. So this really is going to happen. We're more than three miles away from Highway forty-one. We're getting close to three miles away from Pleasant View Road. It's kind of in the middle as development occurs. We'll see those ends start to widen coming from Pleasant View and Highway forty-one first, and this will be kind of the last little piece to be upgraded. We are, as development occurs, you had the Air Leaf subdivision, Tranquil Meadows and Quiet Ridge. They've cached out their frontage improvements, other than putting in the beginning pieces of the multimodal path. We will continue to have the multimodal paths go in because that helps build for the pedestrian and bicycle community. And then we'll utilize those cash outs, hopefully towards some type of future grant, so that we can build that whole area more when it's needed and be that complete project.
Thanks.
So, Rob, just so I'm clear and it's clear for everybody out here, that as development happens along Prairie Avenue, all those developers are putting money towards a little pot that goes off to the side. The city holds that and that pot of money is equivalent to what they normally would have done to widen their road. But instead of having a road that's twenty-eight feet wide and then forty feet wide and then twenty-eight feet wide and then forty feet wide and then twenty-eight feet wide and forty feet wide, they, they just give it to the city and the city holds it and then you guys use that as match funds for grants.
Correct.
Okay. So it's a benefit for everybody.
It's a benefit for everyone. We get some good return on investment. If we can get grant dollars, there is a little bit of risk because the dollars we collect today or five years ago, if we're waiting fifteen, twenty years before we build something, we lose a lot of value on that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you very much. Applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering. I will now test my skills. And I may be found lacking. How do I get to the desktop?
I was going to say we do have assistance if need be.
Stephanie can step in and override everything. It's kind of like that. Stephanie in media.
Look at this.
Good job. Come on. Are we waking up? Okay. Here we go. Thank you. I did that, I did that. All right, good. Let's get to it. So you've seen this, you've seen the location. This is the, it's actually just north of this piece, Tranquil Meadows. You've seen this. Here's the transitional plan, the comp plan that shows this area as transition. Staff's done a good job of explaining what, what the transition meant and the focused area. The R1 zone that we're asking for certainly fits in there. And I'll go on to talk a little bit about it, but we feel that it, it, you know, complements and preserves the character of that surrounding neighborhood. We've got the existing land use and you'll see Tranquil Meadows and Quiet Ridge are, anyway, the darker sections right south of Prairie. Those are R1. I will give you a little sneak preview. We just did turn our subdivision in today and it's sixteen lots. So we're looking at a density of around just a little bit over three, three point one units per acre. So it's consistent with the kind of densities that we're seeing in that area. Larger lots, I think the smallest one is a little under eight thousand and the largest one is over seventeen. So again, the same kind of product. But I think even back up to thirty thousand feet, the R1 zone seems to be a good fit. There certainly is a market demand for housing in that range, although the transitional, again, as staff said, would allow even a higher density. This is what we're asking for, basically meet market demands. So I want to just touch base on, you know, the comp plan and master planning and really, you know, the issue of, I guess, a roundabout way of growth and we're facing it, Post Falls is facing it. I believe it's inevitable. I don't believe it's a bad thing if it can be managed properly. And I think Post Falls is doing an excellent job of that. So let's just talk about these categories. I'm not going to bore you with reading at all, but I do want to capture it. So land use, we've talked about the transitional, we've talked about the R1 zone. We think that that complements and preserves the character of that neighborhood. Housing, again, there's a big market demand. I think the staff report has, shows some statistics that forty-eight percent of the housing is in an R1 zone in the city of Coeur d'Alene. No. The city of Post Falls? Where did that come from? Anyway.
Strike one.
Yes, strike one. Everybody's marking it down. Oh dang, yeah. Little paddles. Anyway, thank you for your patience. Forty-eight percent of the housing in the city of Post Falls is in the R1 zone. There's a huge market demand for this kind of product and that's really what drives it. You know, economic stability with additional growth, that's a benefit. You get a broader economic base. Transportation, so we've talked a little bit about Prairie Avenue, but I want to come back up to a little bit bigger picture. So city of Post Falls has done a good job of master planning all the aspects of growth. We've got transportation, we've got housing, we've got parks master plans, sewer master plans. East Green Acres has a master plan. The school districts have future planning. And each one of these gets input on these projects as they come forward. In the case of transportation, Prairie is a major arterial, minor arterial. It's a big street and it's been master planned with KMPO for regional impacts to handle those. So as we come forward with annexation, all your projects, staff gets, the city gets right-of-way to complement that projected future use. So this project, as with all the others, as staff said, will not only be dedicating right-of-way, which is a huge value in and of itself, we will build a portion of the improvements and pay for the remainder. So development is not only paying its fair, fair share along the way, but those master plan facilities include multimodal paths, you know, wider roads to handle capacity as growth occurs. Public services, utilities, again, sewer's been master planned. You'll see comments in the staff report from the wastewater, says the reclamation plant has the capacity, sewer has capacity. Again, they're proceeding on this mapped path of managed growth that says, yes, we, you know, we're ahead of the game. We put some of the facilities in knowing that growth is going to occur. Water, again, East Green Acres. Parks, you've seen a little sneak preview of parks, but they follow the same path. Impact fees are collected at building permits. Those impact fees are used for transportation. They're used to buy parks, to serve the population as it grows. Natural resources and hazards, there are no hazards here. It's just, you know, Prairie, it's just a field. Natural resources, you know, really, the subdivisions are constructed, landscaping is included. So not just the character of the neighborhoods is preserved, but also it's a nice place. So you, you get that natural resource. Economic development, again, growth builds a stable economic base that drives tax revenues and that's the positive side of it. And that's, again, growth pays for itself. Community design in character, again, lot size is compatible. It, it's compatible with the transition zone. There you go. So I guess I want to close by saying, Ethan talked about the agency notifications. There are twenty-four agencies that are notified. Each one of those agencies theoretically looks at their master plan and says, what impact does this have? Are we okay or are we not? Well, you've seen the three responses from Fire, Post Falls Highway District and DEQ. So we have to assume that they're okay with it, that it fits in. I don't think the school district even commented. It's not unusual for them not to comment, but again, they have a whole system set up. Again, future planning to say, you know, what's the school population doing? What do we need to do to look ahead? And they're doing the same thing you are, is tracking revenues and looking for land and as the, you know, the growth expands and contracts. So I guess in summary, the project that we propose, and you'll find corroboration in the staff report, fits the master plan of all the different increments, pieces of the puzzle for growth. It fits that master plan and we feel it's compatible and we're asking for your concurrence with the R1 zone.
Questions for applicant?
Providing everything gets approved, that needs approved, what is your timeline on when you think you might be able to start on the subdivision? Or is that so far?
Well, I've been guaranteed by staff a quick turnaround on improvement plans, like a week or something, so.
Let's just say that isn't the case.
Historically.
Yeah.
Historically, how quick?
Or maybe I dreamed that, I don't know. Anyway, we would start construction this summer and be done, you know, same timeframe by the fall, platted and lots sold in the fall.
Any other questions? None? Okay. Thank you, sir. Public comment, those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
So I had the same four that submitted via Zoom, neutral. For the city center, submitted neutral for this project as well. None of them want to speak. And then I have one here that does want to speak.
Okay. All right, wishing to speak neutral on this annexation, Tracy Brooks. Is Tracy here? Tracy, we'll have you come up to the front, state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Hi, I'm Tracy Brooks with thirteen, thirteen three hundred West Hayden Avenue in Post Falls. I have, I'm here to, for more of an informational concern. I have property that butts up against this, this fifteen, I have fifteen acres that butts up against this property that they're wanting to annex into the, my, towards my area. My questions are, is how this is going to, if this is going to raise my taxes per value of, for this annexation?
So what I would do is ask all your questions. We'll take notes and then we'll allow the applicant to come back up for rebuttal.
Can I, can I bring this up with showing fifteen acre, or showing the annexation parcel that, for the LaSalle or?
The general area?
Yeah. The red zone.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Okay, as you can see right here at the top of this is where my property butts up to this. And so we have currently, my, my dad hays all this filled right here with alfalfa. My brother's here right now. So I have a little bit of a concern about if they're going to put a different kind of road in here that's going to impact my property. Also, I'm gonna, is this going to put me with, at the top of this in the R1 zone? That's another question I have. And I have the agricultural exemption and is this going to change it to a different category? And I guess my last question is, can I vote on this since I'm out of the city limits? And can any other patrons vote on this that are out towards my area?
Okay. Those were the questions?
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. Field, do we want to address the voting and the fact that it is a commission-led?
Well, I, I think it's, so annexation into the city is sort of a legislative action. Planning, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviews the underlying zone request. In this case, they're asking for the R1 zone. That recommendation then gets forwarded on to city council. City council is, is the one that actually considers whether or not to annex property into the city or, or not. And then they take into account the planning and zoning recommendation on, on the annexation and zoning.
So comments are encouraged, comments are noted, but there's not actually voting that takes place within, other than the commission makes a recommendation to send it to city council?
Oh, I thought there was an action item on this tonight. That's what I thought I saw, so.
Right, the commission, the commission votes, but your, your comments come in. You, you.
Oh, okay.
You encourage public comment.
Okay, so.
So the action's a recommendation at this stage?
Right.
And then council will make that final decision at another public hearing.
Okay, so nobody knows if that would put me in a R1 zone?
Nope, that was the first question. I'm working my way backwards.
Sorry.
Nope, you're fine. Agriculture exemption, do we know?
Well, it won't put you in an R1 zone because it's, it's not annexing your property. It's only the hashed red area that would be potentially annexed into the city. And so the, the zone overlay would only be that particular area.
So you would not be in R1 zone and it would keep her agriculture exemption?
You'd, you'd remain in the county.
Okay.
Now, the road concerns, we'll probably allow the applicant, if they want to touch base with that. And then the tax piece, nobody wants to touch that? Tax piece would be a county matter, correct?
It would be a county matter.
So we would need, you'd need to touch base with the county. That would not be our field or Field's field.
So that's pretty much a yes.
That's a we're not sure. So we can have the applicant come up, since you've utilized your four minutes and ask your question. We'll have the applicant come up and he can touch base about the road piece.
Okay.
We have some, again, some, yeah, I believe, some more public hearing.
Right. Oh, okay, so hold that thought with the road. We'll go through the against and we'll come back to your question, but thank you very, very much. So that was neutral. Those against?
So again, we just have three that submitted via Zoom in opposition but didn't wish to speak.
Okay.
And we have one gentleman here that wants to speak.
Okay. All right, Harland, how are you, sir? Not wishing to speak in opposition. Can we please stop these annexation and subdivision for a while and take a look at what's happening to the quaint little town? So duly noted, thank you. So now with that being said, I would invite the applicant up. We have no more, correct? I would invite the applicant up if they want to address anything, including the road concern.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Gordon Dobler, Dobler Engineering. So yes, we do have a road layout, but it does not abut the property to the north. It's pulled off about 120 feet to allow for lots. So there would be lots that back up to the property to the north, not a road. And I would like to just make a comment about taxes without getting too far into it. And that is, since you're not being annexed into the city, you would remain under the county's taxing structure, not the city's taxing structure. That much is for sure.
You heard from him. All right, thank you. Anything else I add, sir? Think we're good? Okay. Questions? Concerns, thoughts, anybody else we need to bring up from staff, anything else? Nope, seeing none? I'll go ahead and close out the public hearing. Open it up for comment from anyone? Opinions, thoughts?
I actually have some concern about the, the traffic coming onto Prairie as it being a, a major arterial or a principal arterial. It seems as though a low density, a low density residential, a low density R1 is, it doesn't really seem to fit along a, a principal arterial. I mean, that's something that has a lot of traffic. Usually that's a little more geared toward some commercial and some higher density. And I just don't, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned as to why we're putting low density or why we're suggesting putting low density residential right on a, a street like that when that is the only access ingress, egress. So I guess that would be my concern.
What's the zoning with the pieces that are already connected to Prairie? Aren't they R1?
Well, there's, if you look at that, where, that's like jack-o'-lantern teeth. I mean, and the other side of Prairie, where, where is the R1? It's not, it's all in county, isn't it?
No, I think.
On the north side of Prairie, what's in the city of Post Falls?
Nothing.
Okay, so we're, we're grabbing, we're, we're extending to obviously what we don't have any, we don't have anything in the city of Post Falls between Chase and I believe the other crossroad on Prairie, on the north side of Prairie. But we're pushing it that way. And it's just, I guess there's infill, I, I can totally understand some infill on the other side of Prairie because it, it makes sense. But when we're pushing it out to the other side and, and pushing out low density residential, I think that's what's going to follow over there. And I just don't know that that's appropriate growth on that arterial.
Okay. Any other comment?
I think that, so straight across, excuse me, straight across the street from this, it's not shown there very well. We don't see a, a street layout, but it exists. So there's a street that comes off of Prairie Avenue dead center in the middle of that jack-o'-lantern tooth, directly opposite of the red hatched area. And I would assume that knowing the city policy on intersection spacing on Prairie Avenue, they're trying to limit them as much as possible. I even think to the quarter mile. So that would be probably the one spot where access would pop onto Prairie Avenue from an internal street serving any subdivision there. The zoning to the south is exactly the same as what they are requesting. The densities are very, very near. And we've got a transitional comprehensive plan that says it should develop in a way that is similar to those areas around it that are developing. So that matches. You know, historically, we were, the city kind of shot for R1S out here. And I think we started to see that's, at least in my opinion, that's kind of a, it's cool to have a pocket of it, but it's also a huge waste of space on the Prairie. It eats up the Prairie very, very fast. And so it's interesting, you know, I'm just going to kind of digress a little bit, and I'm going to go back to the Prairie Avenue right of way. And how important it is for the city to collect chunk, these widened chunks of right of way with annexations, because the city gets them for free. And, but probably most people in this room don't know is that the reason the Highway 41 project was delayed for a year was because there were holdout people who the state was purchasing property from landowners adjacent to Highway 41. And there were holdout people that actually went to court to dispute the amount that they were being paid and it delayed the project for a year. That doesn't happen when we annex properties and the city just gets it. So the city doesn't have to pay for it, state had to pay for it on Highway 41. City gets it for free. So there's, there's a lot of benefits to, from a regional transportation perspective to having these properties annexed. I see that this, as a, as a property, it's adjacent to the city. If the city is going to, you know, City Council decides to bring it in, I think that R1 is probably more, is definitely more appropriate than R1S. And I don't know if duplexes or multifamily is the right thing out there either. So probably just the same as across the street.
Other comments, thoughts? No? Okay. Then I will leave it to you guys and look for a motion to either approve and move this on to City Council as annexed in, as R1 or deny it.
I would move to recommend approval of the Lasson Annexation A N X dash 0002 dash 2021, recommending an R1 zoning and moving it forward to the City Council.
Okay, got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, call for vote?
Hampi?
No.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Okay. We will move on to our third hearing. Maybe take a little bit of a break after that. I think we're good for, good for a few more. So we'll go ahead and open ANA Construction Subdivision, file number SUBD 000321, or 2021. Laura Jones to present.
Good evening, Commissioners. Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, presenting ANA Construction Subdivision. The owner is Idaho Vineyard and the applicant is ANA Construction. The requested action tonight is to review and approve the proposed 11.8 acre, nine lot subdivision, determining that it meets the requirements found in the Post Falls municipal code. The project is located on the northeast corner of Fourth Avenue and North Idaho Street. I-90 is to the north and there's ID, ITD right of way to the east along Seltis Way. The land is currently vacant without significant vegetation. There is an area that I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation that potentially inhibits lots one, two, and three until a geotechnical study is completed. The city of Post Falls will be the water and the sewer provider. The property is zoned community commercial services within, within industrial property to the northwest, which is currently occupied by Kootenay Fire and Rescue. To the east, or east is the ITD right of way along Seltis. To the west is St. Pius, which has SC4 zoning. And then to the south is SC5 zoning with the Idaho Vineyard mill site. And then we've also got some R2 zoning kind of to the southeast, and that is Woodland Meadows. Here is the proposed subdivision plan. North is to the top of the screen. They are proposing nine lots. Most of them are, well, they range in size from two thirds of an acre up to two acres in size. The community commercial services zone does not have a minimum lot size or a minimum lot width. Therefore, all the lots are conforming with the bulk and placement standards within the Post Falls municipal code. There are three accesses to the site, all on Fourth Avenue. Here, here, and here. The existing access off of North Idaho Street is for the sole purpose of Kootenay Fire and Rescue and will not provide access to this subdivision. So all access coming off Fourth. Staff reviews six subdivision review criteria. The first being that definite provision has been made for a water supply system that is adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed. The proposed subdivision has shown services to each lot and adequate fire flows will be available with exten, with extension of water mains. Second review criteria, adequate provision has been made for a public sewage system and that the existing municipal system can accommodate the proposed sewer flows. City of Post Falls is the sewer provider and parcels are being provided with sanitary sewer, sewer service in conformance with land use assumptions in the city's water reclamation master plan. And the city has the capacity and is willing to serve the lots. Third criteria is that proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. North Idaho Street is a classified minor arterial and Fourth Avenue is a classified major collector, both of which will support the proposed subdivision with improvements. North Idaho Street will be largely unchanged except for the installation of a sidewalk, which there is not one currently there. And Fourth Avenue will be improved per the city engineer's requirements. Fourth criteria is all the area of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, have been identified and that the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions. There are some areas of concern. It is mostly over lots one, two, and three of Block One. And those will require remediation and a geotechnical study prior to development. It was previously used as a construction debris dump site. You can see in this image, it's a little hard to make out, but there is a fence in this area and you can see concrete blocks and other debris that has been dumped there. In the aerial overlay, this larger lot is Lot One. And a large portion of that debris site is located on Lot One. Lot Two, there's a small corner of it that will need that geotech study. And Lot Three, I'm unsure, but I included it because it looks like potentially there might be some of that debris in, overlapping on Lot Three. Fifth criteria is the area proposed for the subdivision is zoned for the proposed use and the use conforms to other requirements found in the code. As mentioned before, the property is zoned community commercial services and is an appropriately zoned area for the uses and the subdivision. Lastly, the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community, community will bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services by paying fees, furnishing land, or providing other mitigation measures for off-site impacts to streets, parks, and other public facilities within the community. It is expected that in most cases, off, off-site mitigation will be dealt with through the obligation to pay development impact fees. As usual, the impact fees will be assessed on individual building permits to assist in mitigating the off-site impacts to parks, public safety, and streets. These are the agencies that were notified and provided an opportunity to comment on the subdivision. Of these agencies, we heard from two, Post Falls Police Department, and they remain neutral on the project. And then the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. They just provided general comments that outline how construction should move forward while protecting air quality, noise, et cetera, pollution, things like that. So no comment on the project, just design standards for moving forward. And that concludes the ANA subdivision. And I can take any questions.
Questions at all?
What's, what's the use?
It's just commercial lots. So we don't have users that have been defined, but nine commercial lots for future development.
And so they might, it could be a?
Could be retail, it could be restaurants, it could be, if a special use was permitted, it could be a multifamily. But again, that would have to go through a special use permit through a public hearing process.
Gotcha.
General commercial.
One more question. You said there's an ITD right of way to the east?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, you guys would know this, is there any, ever any discussion about putting in the other half of that interchange right there on that property?
Rob, I'll let you answer that one.
Mr. Paulus, we're glad you're here this evening.
Good afternoon or good evening, members of the commission, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. The Seltis Way half interchange that's out there, we have looked at that in the past. We've had discussions with the Idaho Transportation Department as well as the Federal Highway Administration. Due to the close proximity to the Spokane Street on and off ramps, that is unlikely that that would ever be developed as a full interchange. In fact, it's more likely that if you had interchange modifications that either A, those would go away, or B, that would be developed as part of a split diamond, but you would not see the construction of the other half, which is missing at that location. Any other questions for transportation, water, or sewer? By the way, I'll get more steps in as someone mentioned as I was coming in. Okay, thank you.
Nope, we're good, all right. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, the, the study on the land, is that something that's just recommended or is it going to have to be done because of the past use of that land?
It's not a condition of approval, but in order to develop the site, I believe our engineering department will require that, just because it's unknown what the conditions are beneath that surface of soil.
So if we wanted to, we could put it as a condition.
John?
I don't see why you couldn't have that as a condition of approval since it would address one of the review criteria.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question for you guys. Am I, don't I recall at some point in time us discussing that subdivisions were going to become administrative?
We did have had a public workshop on that and it has been discussed to bring forward a subdivision code update that would propose an administrative review at looking at subdivisions because of the straightforward nature of the review criteria in of itself.
But we're not done yet?
No.
Any other questions?
I think Field has some additional commentary.
I'd just say, we'll have to go through a, a ordinance change in a code update, so it'll have to be a notice hearing and, and that to change that.
it'll have to be a noticed hearing and that to change that in the code.
Anyone else? No? Thank you. At this time, we'll invite the applicant up. I believe, Mr. Marshall, you've been up seven or eight times already, just not up here.
Good evening. Again, Brad Marshall, I'm with JEB Engineers. My address is 7825 Middle Arkway in Coeur d'Alene. Also with me tonight, and available questions as needed, is Ryan Ruffcorn with A&amp;A Development. First, I want to thank the Commission for your time, for volunteering and serving the city of Post Falls. I want to thank staff for their help on the project and the excellent staff report. And also state that we agree with the conditions of approval, with a few minor tweaks and adjustments. Again, as mentioned, well, aware, we're seeking approval of a nine-lot subdivision on 11 acres. The lot sizes range actually from about .63 to 1.19 in the CCNS zone. Really, it's the foster development of a mixed-use development, really the former Idaho veneer site. As previously mentioned in the earlier part of the hearing, we're actually super excited about this project. I think it's a great catalyst for the redevelopment of downtown area. Absolutely. We think it fits really well with that city center master plan that was brought before you tonight and the pending urban renewal district that's likely to come for you, before In regards to, A&amp;A has actually purchased the remaining portions of the Idaho veneer site that's south of Fourth, both east and west of Idaho Street, and we're actively working on master planning efforts of that property as well, which involves a really key term, makes-use development, consisting of different housing types and commercial endeavors from retail to service to all types of, variety of commercial opportunities, also including as a civic space or a large civic building. And fundamentally, in layman's terms, we're looking at retaining one of those large buildings that's on the Idaho veneer site and using that for civic space. So, whether or not it's farmers markets or open-air venues or something like that. We're also working with the city to open up what's called Idaho Street from Fourth to Third Street and creating kind of another downtown core. So, we envision the extension of Idaho Street to look something like you've seen what kind of Riverstone looks like in Coeur d'Alene. You've got white sidewalks, you've got first-floor retail and second, third-floor housing. And again, that housing product brings in the customers to those retail opportunities and business opportunities. So, this is, this project is the northeast corner of a much larger project that's in the works. As to the type of uses on this particular piece of property, we envision, again, restaurant, grocery, possibly senior housing, possibly hotel hospitality. We do have a couple very interested parties in a couple of these properties that will be a tremendous catalyst and a great opportunity for the city of Post Falls. But it takes a subdivision of the property to bring those in because it very rarely do you find a big user to take on this big a piece of property, so that's the subdivision. I think in opportunity, again, a reminder, the Commission's well aware, a development like this creates a lot of economic benefits, not only in the short-term engineering jobs, but also the construction jobs that move on to service and retail. And the end result is you have business on those properties that create sales tax and property tax revenue for the city. So, great opportunity here. As mentioned, the staff report, along comes with the development, is mitigating the impacts of development. So, as part of that, we'll be extending sewer and water within, along the frontages of the site internally into the site, in those drive lanes. We'll be reconstructing or adding what are called frontage improvements along Fourth and Idaho Street to accommodate that additional traffic that'll come from it. So, you'll see a whole new street section there. And again, a reminder, the applicant is purchased or is developing the south side of Fourth. So, we'll actually be reconstructing that whole section of street there. So, and that'll look very similar to what you see farther to the west on Fourth Street closer to Spokane Street. So, pretty exciting stuff. We envision too also a roundabout at the intersection of Fourth and Idaho that'll, over time, and ideally, we think that's a good spot for public art as well. So, maybe that's something that's on the plan. As previously mentioned, the lots will be accessed off Fourth off what's called a private drive that kind of wraps around internally. So, we think we've addressed the access, which is three points. As mentioned, the staff report, there is an old fill area on lots, what is it, lots two, three, and four, which is very common of the old mill sites along the river. And a reminder, there was about 10 mill sites from Post Falls all the way over to the Coeur d'Alene Resort Golf Course. And as time has progressed, those sites, mills have been redeveloped. And this is very typical, well, when we purchased the property, we had what's called a Phase One and a Phase Two down on the property. We wanted to know where we're getting, you know? And there's some concrete debris and some wood debris in there, and we know that we have to pull that material out and dispose of it in the appropriate location and then replace that material with compacted soils under the supervision of a geotechnical engineer. At the end of the day, that soil compaction is tested and insert stamp. So, one comment, we're probably not opposed to that condition of approval, but if we could push that particular condition of approval off to actually the building permit on that lot, that might be more appropriate. Because what it does by doing that, it allows the subdivision to move forward, but ensures that that lot will be fully reclaimed. So, if we could push that off to the building permit, it might be more appropriate. We're kind of moving on. Try and get to the next slide. What button do I push? Bring me to the zone, the aerial image. There we go. That one, right there. Talk a little bit about, there's one condition, you know, again, we agree with it, the conditions of approval, the findings, but condition five, there's a couple bullets below it that require the extension of a 10-foot sidewalk from the east end of the property line to Seltis Way. And 10 foot's a pretty significantly wide sidewalk. And again, that's from the east property line to Seltis Way. That's a distance of about 250 feet. And it also requires the installation of a 6-foot sidewalk on the west side of Seltis Way. Again, a reminder, there's a significant right-of-way section, ITD right-of-way, between the east property line and the physical Seltis Way. We're struggling with that condition. While we see, definitely see where city staff has come from, and as far as a city staff member, I'd probably throw it out there too. But it's kind of an off-site improvement, it's a significant distance, it's a significant cost. That sidewalk doesn't, at this point in time, really tie into anything because there is no sidewalk on the north side of the interstate that kind of wraps around to Idaho Street, let's say, south of the Pizza Hut. And again, there's no sidewalk on the west side of Seltis Way. Also in the makes of that is, over time, there'll be a future intersection improvement of Fourth and Seltis and the interstate on-ramp there. And ideally, that's a roundabout, which is a perfect location for a roundabout. And when you're designing and reconstructing or constructing that roundabout, it's likely that you'll tear out a portion of that sidewalk that we may have to install. So, again, would we like to see a sidewalk there at some point? Absolutely. With the city, absolutely. But it's a real cost and it may be more appropriate to delay that. I think there's also possibly some other funding sources for that, with possibly impact fees or urban renewal or as part of the roundabout project. So, maybe an edit to that condition might be if we left it there, maybe as, if funded by others or as negotiated with city staff. And talking to city staff, I believe they're open to some negotiation on that. Summary, you know, we've reviewed the comment letters, like there's just one comment letter. Again, we're mitigating the impacts of the project with sewer, water, frontage improvements, impact fees, those type of things. I think we've submitted a very strong application that meets the code. This is existing zoning, it's not an annexation. You know, we're meeting the subdivision code. Generally, we have staff support, it's a very strong staff report. And with that, we respectfully request approval of the subdivision with a minor modification to condition number five. Thank you.
Question for applicant?
Yeah, I do. So, on number five, is the part that you would like to see left out, omitted, includes 6-foot sidewalk along Seltis Way frontage from Fourth Avenue to the I-90 bridge?
Yeah.
Is that the, can you kind of point, can you show?
You can use the mouse, the mouse.
Yeah, could you do that and kind of show me where that, where they're asking you to put that sidewalk?
Oh, gosh.
Oops.
Pick one, previous, just go to previous.
Brad, that's why I'm not presenting much anymore.
Yeah.
New interface.
I do hear it's all over the place. Sometimes you've got to get used to that. There we go.
So, it's over there?
Yeah.
So, from, so that, so where is Seltis? Okay, so Seltis is, okay, I see what you're saying then. I thought it was, okay, all right. In that little section right there?
Right here to there, that's about 250 feet. So, that's one section of the sidewalk, and then there's another section that's along Seltis.
Okay. So, then who, do we know who owns the parcel?
Yeah, it's ITD right-of-way.
Oh, it's just a right-of-way?
And that's another challenge. Like, ITD are great people to work with. It's a bigger organization, a little cumbersome to work with them on right-of-way. Just, it's a timing challenge.
So, is that something that normally we would do, is ask somebody to put a sidewalk on somebody else's right-of-way? I mean, is that, is that something that's standard or?
Once again, Rob's probably the best one to talk about.
Okay. Sorry about that, Rob.
Do we have, hold on, before Rob comes up, do we have any more questions for applicant?
I just had one on the remediation of the lots you'd like pushed off for the building phase. Was that something that the new owners would be responsible for? And would that slow, would that slow the interest in those lots?
Yeah, we actually want to reclaim them ourselves and sell them as ready to go. That's our benefit, actually makes it more marketable.
Sure.
So, we would take on the responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Paulus, before we go to public comment, do you want to, yeah, let's talk sidewalks.
Members of the Commission, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. Along Seltis Way from Idaho Street to Bay Street, there has historically been a well-worn path utilized by pedestrians, again, on both sides of that roadway. The city has, for over 20 years, been continually trying to get grant dollars to get sidewalks in along that stretch of roadway. In 2018, we were successful in constructing the first section, which was sidewalk from Idaho to Bay Street on the north and east side of Seltis Way. There still remains the, the section without sidewalk on the southern or western section of Seltis Way, and we still do continue to see some people utilize that side of the road for whatever reason. And there is a well-worn path in that area. Believe, that picture's not going to show it very well, but this is looking at Fourth Avenue, Seltis Way being a little bit to the right, and then you can see right along here, this is the path that people walk, and then as they get to the bridge, there is existing pedestrian accommodations on that bridge being a 6-foot sidewalk on both sides.
And that's, that's where you were wanting that, that number five?
That is, portion of number five was to build this piece. Now, the city of Post Falls is in the process of going through and updating their impact fees. If, and I stress, if the city council chooses to update and adopt the impact fees as they are proposed, this section of sidewalk along Seltis would be covered by impact fee dollars in total. So, when they would come forward with doing a development and the impact fees were adopted as they're proposed, if they were built, the city of Post Falls would be responsible for reimbursing the developer 100% for those improvements. Or the city could hold off on those improvements, which I think we probably would lean towards because if the impact fees are adopted as proposed, we want to be moving forward with design of a traffic control device, preferably a roundabout, as Mr. Marshall mentioned, but it could also potentially be a traffic signal at the intersection of Fourth and Seltis. In the discussion, you know, we're looking at the other portion of condition number five, which is the 250 feet more or less up to Seltis Way from here. The city has the Seltis Way sidewalk in its draft impact fees, it has a traffic control device at the intersection of Fourth and Seltis in its draft impact fees. What we're lacking is, we haven't completely identified this portion of sidewalk in here as being a portion of a roundabout or traffic signal or a portion of Seltis sidewalk. So, if we were to move those projects forward and build the roundabout or traffic signal here, we could potentially have this section of 200 and some odd feet, because the roundabout would pay for a portion of that. But you'd have around 200 and some odd feet of sidewalk that the city does not have a funding mechanism identified for at this time. Could that section be built with the assistance of urban renewal? Possibly. But that's not currently on the urban renewal plan that I'm aware of, but it could be added in there. Is it something, you know, was mentioned by Mr. Marshall about seeing the need for it, but maybe holding off on the funding of it? It's something that could be designed with this project and it could be cashed out and then the city could utilize the cash-out amount of that section of sidewalk towards helping with the roundabout and making the rest of that connection. City staff does feel that the completion of pedestrian accommodations along Fourth Avenue all the ways to Seltis Way is important. It's part of putting that puzzle piece in and filling the gap, knowing that in the future we're going to put the other pieces in of Seltis Way sidewalk and the roundabout, and that way we won't have a missing piece when we build the other portions. I hope that elaborates a fairly complex issue for a simple sidewalk.
You know, I, and I appreciate that because that gives me a much better understanding. I guess more, more my concern is, I'm just wondering if that's a pretty big lift to ask of a developer that is developing property that isn't really even touching a lot of that. I mean, that's a, that's a long way. If I look at that on that aerial, that's a pretty, that's a big stretch.
About 250 feet.
And is that something we typically do or that is becoming more typical for the city to require?
So, the city does require improvements that are not necessarily in the city of Post Falls rights-of-way. Highway 41 is a very good example of that. Historically, we've required curb and gutter being put in on Highway 41. We've required multi-use paths being put in along Highway 41. We work with the Idaho Transportation Department on these issues, and we had to work with them in order to get the sidewalk in on the north slash east side of Seltis Way. What is a little bit unusual from this is, yes, we have 250 feet from the eastern boundary line all the ways out to Seltis Way. That is more than what we typically see. We're typically seeing more where the developer is going to be putting in the frontage improvement, so the road is going to be closed. so the road is going to be closer to that edge, so they're going to put sidewalk in along this edge. Well, here it's pushed out to here. And they would be putting in sidewalk from here to where a road would be. Normally, that'd be more around the lines of 25, 30 feet.
Okay, so, it's really that section that would be really more than we would typically, or, request?
Yes, you're, right in here, you're looking at about 200 and some odd feet of additional sidewalk.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess that, that answers my question.
Okay.
So, Rob, I got a quick question for you, a couple of quick, one quick one, and then a lead on. So, where's the ITD right-of-way, where's their jurisdiction to stop and city starts?
This line here is the edge of ITD's jurisdiction. ITD does control all of this over here as well. Seltis Way from Spokane Street, and then down to just about at Bay Street, where the Yokes is at, that is all under the jurisdiction of ITD as part of the I-90 business loop through the city of Post Falls.
So, does it go straight across the street there? Does it kind of jog back? Is it just?
Our best information is that it comes across at this location.
Okay. So, are you considering as a, so, we require frontage improvements?
Yes.
And anything beyond that is off-site, we gotta have some sort of justification for that. Are you considering Seltis Way a frontage? And that's just a really wide frontage there?
That is, that is correct.
Is that the nexus behind it?
That is the nexus.
Okay.
And, you know, if we go into our construction design standards that we utilize, we also usually talk about connecting into existing facilities in a manner that best serves the public, and trying to have sidewalk, if you're building it to this point here, connecting it the rest of the way to this intersection, even though, in reality, we do not want to see people crossing Seltis Way at that location by foot, they do have the ability to cross over here, and this seems to be a logical connection to at least get them to the intersection and complete the improvements.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, please don't go far.
You're welcome, and I won't.
Public comment, those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
The same four in neutral.
Okay. Those opposed?
We have the same three in opposition, and then...
Schlenker, right? Am I, Harland, am I getting closer?
You're getting closer, yes.
Okay. Does not wish to speak in opposition, again, please slow down this nonsense. Thank you, sir. Any others?
None.
Okay. Mr. Marshall, anything that you want to add, any rebuttal at this time?
Again, Brad Marshall, JB Engineers, 7825 Milllock Way. Again, we've submitted a really detailed application, it's a very strong, solid staff report. We think it brings a lot to the downtown, we're super excited about it, so, we respectfully request approval. Again, a tweak to condition number five. I think there's a key point, is in looking at this map, we're going to, if we extend that sidewalk, we're going to bring people to an intersection of Fourth and Seltis, that we really don't want to bring people crossing at this point in time. And I wonder, if you look at the south end of that map, there's actually a brand-new pathway that runs parallel to the apartment development there. So, people coming out of this commercial development would cross Fourth on a pedestrian crossing, go to the brand-new pathway, take this nice pathway that's a distance away from the road, and then it ultimately connects to Seltis. So, again, if we take them, that sidewalk into here, they would have to cross this intersection, and at this point in time, we don't really want people crossing that intersection. It's a high-traffic area. Ideally, they'll cross mid-block, because we're constructing a pedestrian crossing, they'll connect to a brand-new trail, pathway, multimotive pathway, that's right here, and then ultimately connect into Seltis Way, at that point. So, it's tricky, certainly see both, all sides, all sides of this, but I think it might be more appropriate to push out that sidewalk requirement.
Any other questions, while Mr. Marshall's here?
Is there an estimated cost on that 250-feet of sidewalk?
Gosh.
I ballparked them while we were sitting here.
Yeah, ballpark would work.
It's about, all of it's about 10 grand.
Just 10 grand?
About that.
Plus the six-footer along Seltis.
That included that.
Yeah.
I was doing math over here, Brad.
All right. Any other questions? No? Mr. Marshall, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Does Rob need to come back up, or are we okay?
Okay.
Okay? Nothing else, before we close it out? Okay, we'll go ahead and close out the subdivision, and open it up for comment. Mr. Stephenson?
I, I like the project, I think it's the business that needs to come in, it's in the, you know, everything goes well with the city center master plan. I think this is a good catalyst to start that area. You know, I asked the question about the land study, and I'm fine pushing that off, I think it's well-known that it needs to be done, and it will be done at some point. You know, we talked a lot about the sidewalks. I keep the conditions in there as they are, because honestly, I think these people are walking it anyways, and this will give them a pathway and off the, off the dirt path that's there. So, I do see that it's, you know, way out of the way, but I think it needs to stay in there. And I just hope it does bring in the businesses, depending on what happens with impact fees, and in the future, you know, there's just a lot of what-ifs with sidewalks and impact fees, and we'll just, but I think it's good development for that, for that area and business in the city, city center.
Okay. I'll hop all the way down to the other end. Commissioner Hampi?
I, I like it, I think that it's, it's nice to see that that is going to be developed in that area. It's a part of the city that I think has a lot to offer when revitalized.
Russ, what say you?
Well, I agree with, with both commissioners here. I, I would be open to easing condition five. As I was saying earlier, I think that we should do what we can to encourage the development in this area, and our city, our downtown area in general, and I think everybody wants to facilitate a downtown area, and so, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I will give the caveat that I'm, that's really the only additional area we have for downtown, and I'm hoping that their intentions are truly to make this a mixed-use downtown area, and we need additional housing, you know, prices are through the roof, people can't afford to get a place to live, and we need to facilitate that, but this is our downtown area, and we've already got some of the mill site used exclusively for multifamily, and we have area for housing. And some mixed-use housing in the downtown sounds great, but I'm hoping this isn't a segue to a special-use permit for dedicated multifamily, that would be a disappointment. And so, I hope that's the direction we're heading here.
Kevin?
Just excited to see the more commercial coming, and same as Ross, I'd be worried that it'd be a multi-use coming in the future, and I would hope it wouldn't be, but the city really needs a, really needs a commercial infrastructure to pick up on all the growth that we have, you know, and if we don't get that, it's just going to be more people coming on top of no commercial.
I would say the one, the one thing that we have to remind ourselves is that would necessitate a special-use permit, so if they were to ever take that direction, it would have to come back through us again.
Yes.
I think they know how we feel. Ray?
Ethan, could you back up and kind of go towards a little bit bigger picture there?
You said back up to it?
Back up to a different photo that kind of has the more, more comprehensive aerial. There we, that's fine, that was fine. So, this kind of gives us a little bit better, bigger picture of pedestrian facilities out there. And so, my mind's eye, I think about the condition five, and I think it's probably fine to let them cash it out, and let the city put it in later when they have the roundabout, do that thing. And the reason I say that is pretty simple. So, let's just say that there's people in the apartments to the south that live there, and they want to go use commercial services across the street, they're going to cross the street at a mid-block crossing, like Brad talked about. Let's say they want to go to Walgreens, okay, they're not going to go east, and then go all the way around the corner to loop back to the same place they can get to, if they go west and cross the same, and cross the bridge at Idaho Street. And so, I see it as one of those things where I don't see there being a whole lot of use there, and I think putting people out there in a place where there's just a dead-end sidewalk is not a good thing at this point in time. So, I think that probably fine to, to let them cash it out, it's not a whole lot of things, cash that out, and call it good. With regards to the unconsolidated fill, or the construction debris that's been there, and has been accumulating for years and years and years, my entire life, as far as I can remember back, that's been a site that's accumulated debris. I struggle to think that we should, I struggle to think that we should put it on a purchaser of a property that may, you know, commercial sometimes happens quickly, sometimes it doesn't, maybe 20 years from now, different staff report, you know, this gets lost in the staff report, and all of a sudden someone buys a property, doesn't understand that there's unconsolidated fill, we're all gone and off to retirement land. And I just think it should be remediated now, and dealt with as part of the subdivision, that's one of the reasons for that, that addition of, or that criteria, group criteria, is to make sure that if there is known problems, that they're taken care of and remediated, so that it doesn't end up being a latent problem in the future. So, I do think that's probably, I wrote a condition, if that's, that condition number eight, that I would propose, would be that a geotech report shall be completed with regards to the potential unconsolidated fill, and remediate it in conformance with the recommendations of that report. I also think we can modify condition five, items one and two, bolt points one and two, allowing those improvements east of the project boundary to be cashed out.
I see this as a pivotal piece, if you look, what is going to take place across the street, the idea of still utilizing some of Idaho veneer's pieces, the idea of live, work, and play, I think it's extremely exciting. I think you guys have all brought good points, so at this point, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve, let me get the subdivision number, subdivision SUBD 0003-2021, adding condition eight, as previously stated, with regards to a geotech report, and amending condition five, as previously stated, to allow the improvements east, the sidewalk improvements east of the project boundary to be cashed out.
Got a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second call for vote?
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All right, so moved. Commissioners, do we need to take a couple, second break to stretch, or are we good? We want a quick break? Okay, three and a half minutes. Three and a half minutes.
Well, your, your, your points are shared typically by the city council.
It didn't used to be though.
Really?
Yeah.
Hopefully everybody had a second to stretch. We lost a few. All right. We'll keep things moving and we will go ahead and this time and open up the Greens Ferry Glen Annexation and Subdivision. Mr. Porter, Ethan, you've been doing a little bit of everything tonight, so why don't you just continue and take it away?
Will do. Good evening, commissioners. Again, Ethan Porter here, planning with the City of Post Falls. I'm here to present Greens Ferry Glen. This is a dual one where the annexation is going through as well as the subdivision concurrently, so keeping that in mind. The owners recently just changed over with the quick claim deed that was recorded today. So I had to update this last minute, but formerly Ryan Stoker was the owner and now it's Eagle Crest Land LLC. And I'll let the applicant go into more detail if that's needed for that. So the applicant here is H2 Surveying and Engineering, who is here tonight to represent. Looking at the requested action tonight, like I said, there is two, a annexation as well as a subdivision. So Planning and Zoning Commission is being asked by the applicant to review the annexation request of approximately nine acres to make the recommendation of proposal, or proposed single-family residential R1 zoning designation to city council as well as subdividing the proposed, or subdividing into 28 lots over the nine acres. So I'll go into detail. I'll start with the annexation first, go through the review criteria for the annexation, and then roll into the subdivision. So here you can see the project hatched in red. It's along Greens Ferry Road, running north and south here, and then 16th Avenue running east and west, so it's at the southwest corner of 16th and Greens Ferry. This is a county pocket. You can't really see from this, but that is a large county pocket. I think one of the bigger ones in the city, so this would be a benefit because it supports the conference plan that regards of annexing in the county pocket, so we don't have any more of those. But here, we can see the current land use on that site is large lot residential homes within Cooney County. The years, there's no physical characteristics that stand out, posing issues for vegetation, topographical concerns. The water provider would be Ross Point Water District and the sewer would be provided by the City of Post Falls. Here you can see the zoning map. To the east primarily, in the northeast and southeast, you have R1 zoning within the incorporated city limits primarily. So, single-family homes basically make up the entirety of what's surrounding that within the city. And then you have obviously the county lands surrounding it as well in that pocket. Looking at the zone change review criteria for the annexation, as you heard tonight, consistency with the future land use map, as well as the goals and policies found in the conference plan, which I lightly touched on a little bit, being the county pocket. It will help, you know, with utilities and meeting those needs as well as meeting city standards and the master transportation plan as far as that's concerned as well. And that's also reiterated in your staff report as well. Looking at the third one for zoning assigned, following considerations of the street classifications, traffic patterns, and existing development, future land uses and community plans. The road classification is along this way, defined in your staff report. You know, this can handle an R1 zone subdivision, which is also surrounding, so there's not much of a change as far as use and intensity. It does, you know, compatible with the surrounding R1 zone is what they're requesting and asking for, for that proposal. So it would meet that intent as well. Kind of going back to one, looking at the future land use designation. This map here shows it projected as a future land use of medium density, and they are requiring a lower density, so it's a less intense density for that. But overall, it's still residential within this area, so meeting that requirement as well. Looking at the fourth and sixth one, it's not commercial nor industrial, so that's not applicable to this proposal. But number five does mention a lower density residential zoning, which this is a proposal for. And it is not a part of some urban center activity near it or higher classifications, as you saw from the zoning. In the aerial, there's a lot of single-family homes, R1 zoning around the project location. Here you can see the parks map there. It's well within the park mile buffer. It's got parks, you know, that can be serviced by the subdivision, or the subdivision can be, has parks within that mile radius. You can kind of see the pocket there from this view a little bit more. That's one of the bigger ones. So we would be closing that a little bit more, which is, like I mentioned, part of the conference of plan, you know, meeting that need. So looking at that, that's the whole annexation review criteria, those six. We'll roll right into the subdivision here, which is what they have proposed as far as a layout on the screen. It's a little hard to see, but the lot sizes and lot widths do meet the R1 zoning standard requirements of 60 feet for lot width, as well as a minimum of 6,500 square foot for lot sizes. So they're all at that minimum or above and meeting those requirements. Subdivision review criteria, looking at the utilities for the water and the sewer. Like I said, the water is being supplied by Ross, the separate water district purveyor than the city. So they'll have to go through their standards and meet their requirements as well for that. And then the city does have capacity for the sewer system to take on an R1 subdivision of this size. And looking at number three, the proposed streets and consistent with the transportation element of the conference of plan. As I mentioned, it is in line with the transportation master plan as laid out and kind of detailed in your staff report that was written. And number four, we're looking at the soil and topographical conditions. And as I mentioned in the annexation kind of zone change review criteria, there's none on site that requires any attention at this point to remediate. So if it is in the county and they're using drain fields and subject tanks, those will have to be, you know, either filled and taken out or removed prior to, you know, development. And those uses won't be allowed, so city utilities will be hooked up or the water district purveyor will require them to hook up as well. So they will have those in place if that's needed. The area proposed for number five is zoned for the proposed use and conforms to other requirements found in this code. As I mentioned, surrounded by R1 zoning, they're proposing an R1 zoning. It's compatible, fits the future land use designation and kind of the residential use within this area. So, and then looking at number six is dealing with those, community not bearing more than its fair share of costs regarding parks and streets and safety. So impact fees upon building permit, when they, when those get pulled, those impact fees will be dealt, will be applied at that stage. And then basically alleviate that from the community bearing more than its fair share of costs of that. So through development, impact fees will be paid ultimately. We are proposing, that's not within your staff report, at condition number 11. It was basically dealing with lot 18, and I'll show the next slide of what that is. But lot 18, block two, they have an existing shop on site. And proposing Exhibit A3, you can see that in the preliminary subdivision plan. They'll have to meet city requirements and you can't plat a shop on a lot without a residence per city code. And so to remediate that, you know, this condition 11, they'll have to pull that building permit before plating for that single-family residence, making sure that they meet that conformity to the zoning. So that'll be a way to get in and conform to the, to that for the plat. So that's what we're proposing for condition 11, that we include that as well. So here you can see lot 18 is this lot right here, one of the larger ones. And there's a street that's proposed to go in right here in this easement. And then the shop lies right about here. Originally, the house is over here and it included the shop, but they're subdividing that shop off. And so to meet that code requirement and city standards, we request that condition 11 just be pulling that permit prior to plat for that residential home that's going to be on the site. So these, you can see the agencies that it was routed to. And then of these agencies, what we received back for comments were the Department of Environmental Quality, which is pretty standard for their general comments during construction time, making sure the noise pollution, all those kind of nuisances are brought to a minimum or remediated at entirety. And then Cooney County Fire and Rescue remains neutral in the proposal as well. So there's a lot going on with this one, as there's a few things you got to do for motions wise, so I just wanted to lay it out. You have annexation recommendation to city council that you guys have to do a motion for, as well as within the subdivision, you approve, deny, approve with conditions, and then include that proposed condition number 11 as well. And so with this being said, the subdivision doesn't go to city council. It stays and you guys approve, deny, or approve with conditions here at this point. And then the annexation moves on forward to city council. And that subdivision approval tonight will be pending basically that annexation approval. So annexation gets denied, subdivision ultimately gets denied because they can't annex into the city. So just to kind of lay it out and make it clear for you, these are going to be your motions tonight. And I would be happy to entertain any questions you have for city staff.
Questions for staff?
I do have a question. In, in the map, you show the, the hatched area is the proposed. What's the, what's the little hatched area down the road?
That I believe, and Rob Paulson can correct me, but that's right-of-way dedication for the annexation. So during the annexation proposal, they're dedicate, they dedicate right-of-way as well. And I'm pretty sure the applicant as well can, you know, detail it out, he's familiar with this. But ultimately, it's that stretch that connect the right-of-way to the city center, or the city limits, excuse me.
He seems pretty confident. I think the applicant could probably cover it.
But it doesn't actually touch the parcel. Or is it just because they didn't want to hatch over the Greens Ferry Road?
It should.
Yeah, go back to that. See, it doesn't.
It should connect to Greens Ferry Road.
Okay, so they just didn't, because the words were there. Okay, all right.
We would have to go through a separate annexation, I believe, possibly if that was the case, if it wasn't connecting, but potentially.
Okay, got it.
Be looked at differently, but.
Yeah, I got it now.
Connecting for this, for this proposal, so.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, sir. Bring up the applicant.
Good evening. Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering, P O Box 2488, Post Falls. I'm here tonight on behalf of Ryan Stoker, who still is the owner. He's just transferring entities that will own this development. Started preparing a PowerPoint presentation, but as you know, in the City of Post Falls, it's not really needed. They do a great job. So what we're looking at is, as Mr. Porter mentioned, 28 lot development on a county island in the city. A nice infill piece. As Mr., as Commissioner Kimball mentioned earlier, it's nice to have developments that dedicate the right-of-ways you need to expand city infrastructure that is much needed. And so in this particular case, we are dedicating much-needed right-of-way on Greens Ferry, which is, I believe, 110-foot right-of-way. And then also on 16th, which I believe is a 85-foot right-of-way. So Greens Ferry is a minor arterial and 16th is a minor collector. And if anybody's driven that intersection lately, this is much needed. So difficult to traverse with the existing improvements that have taken place on the east side, but not yet on the west side. Portions of that infrastructure will be placed, or will be constructed now as far as the trails. The city does have future right-of-way improvements that'll take place as more of a master plan for Greens Ferry and 16th. So sanitary sewer, as Commissioner Hampi mentioned, we do have to extend sanitary sewer from 12th and Greens Ferry, which is the reason that the annexation includes that swath of right-of-way. So sanitary sewer and domestic water will both be extended from 12th in conjunction with working together with the Ross Point Water District. And those improvements, sanitary sewer will be extended to our southern boundary here. Good point, but we're extending a point of access here at our southern boundary of the property. Worked with the city on a nice access approach there into the development to serve the development and then extend it out to 16th. Domestic water will be extended from 12th and Greens Ferry, as I mentioned, through the development, but also up to the intersection of 16th and Greens Ferry, and then to the west for future development, just to make some improvements for domestic water as we expand further to the north and in this county island. It's, it's pretty cut and dry development. You know, the lots are, they vary from around 7,600, excuse me, 7,600 square feet to about 29,000 with the retention of an existing home here on the corner of our proposed Road B currently, working on some street names, so I apologize for the crudeness of that. There is a private alleyway that will provide dual access to lots 9, 10, 13, 14, 15, 16, as well as 17 and 18 here in this development. But 17 and 18, those, that'll be the primary access for those lots as no additional driveways will be constructed out to Greens Ferry. But 9, 10, 13 through 16, they will also have driveways off their respective roads as well. So nice shop lots, something much desired in the city at this time. So there is a medium-density future land use map designation, but this is consistent with the neighborhoods, and so sticking with that lower-density push. And I think that's a pretty common theme in this area, so sticking with that. Mr. Porter and I did discuss, and I guess I have discussed with staff since the start of this project, what we're calling condition 11, the need for a shop to have a house in the city. You can't have a lot with just a shop on it. So lot 18, as pointed out here, and I'd grab the little thing, but I don't want to be the fourth engineer tonight to mess that up. So lot 18 does have a rather large shop, and lot 17 would have the rather large home that exists. And those will remain, but we are splitting them up. So the, I guess as part of condition 11, I'm rather requesting not to obtain a permit to build a home prior to plating, but rather to apply for a permit. We're just not sure exactly which home we want to put in there yet, but we will have an application in prior to plating for a, a single-family residence that will support that shop. So maybe just a small tweak on that condition, just an application in and submitted with a set of building plans, but not a, not pulling a permit. And I know that's maybe skirting the city's code a little bit, but I just want to make sure the city's aware that we will comply with that and there will be something constructed there. It doesn't, it doesn't behoove my client to sit on a lot in this market right now, so it will be taking place. And I may be wrong. We may be able to apply and obtain a permit ahead of that. I just, I want to give us that option. We don't know exactly. Somebody might come forward with a different home or something, so. Just want to bring that out to you, so. Yeah, density is around three units per acre. And yeah, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for applicant?
Nope.
No?
For the, for the public benefit, who's going to be paying for the water and sewer improvements going all the way up Greens Ferry and across 16th there?
We're, for the sanitary sewer, it'll be extended at the developer's costs up to our southern boundary through the development and out to 16th. For the domestic water, the improvements are, we're, we're in discussions with Ross Point on who's responsible for what, so.
Thank you.
Development does take care of its own, and so considerable portion of that will obviously be the developer's responsibility.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Public comment. Those in favor?
None.
Those neutral?
Yes. The same four that submitted.
Okay.
Neutral, don't wish to speak.
Okay.
And then we have the same three in opposition that do not wish to speak. And then I have some here.
Is that last one a different one? Okay. All right. And none of them are, do we have, no one wishes to speak?
No.
Okay. To run through this really quickly, in opposition, Lindsey Lisher. Is the requested zoning compatible with street classification, traffic pattern, existing development, future land use? No. Commercial high-density residential zoning is typically assigned along streets in a higher classification, yes. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from higher intensity urban activity, yes. Industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties that. assigned for properties that are sufficient access with major transportation routes to be situated away from residential zonings?" Yes. Basically just reading the questions that she had answered. "Is the requested zoning district accordance with the future land-use map a comprehensive plan?" No. "Is the requested zone district consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan?" No. Basically stating opposed, "The subdivisions have not made provisions for water supply and adequate terms of quality for subdivision proposed." "Have the adequate provisions been made for public sewage system and existing municipal system accommodations for the proposed sewer flow?" No. "Are the proposed streets consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan?" No. "Have all the areas of the proposed subdivision involved soil-topographical conditions presenting hazard been identified?" No. "Has the area proposed subdivision zoned for the proposal used, and do the proposals used conform to the requirements found in the city code?" No. "Has the developer made adequate plans to ensure the community will bear no more than its fair share of the costs of providing services, paying fees, furnishing lands, or providing other mitigation measures for off-site impact to streets, parks, and other public features within the community? Is the expectation that in most cases, off-site mitigation will be dealt with through the obligation to pay the developer impact fee?" No. And lastly, Mr. Schlenker, who's, I believe, has left, that again, is in opposition, does not wish to speak, simply saying, "Please, slow down." Any others in opposition?
None.
Okay. Mr. MacArthur, any rebuttal at this time?
Just, again, Scott MacArthur, MacArthur Engineering, just wanna point out that, and as I stated in my narrative, impact fees are paid at the time of building permit, as Mr. Porter mentioned. So, those do go to parks, emergency services, city streets. So, thank you.
Duly noted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we close this out?
Got a quick one for field, maybe. Wouldn't that existing shop be an existing non-conforming use and therefore allowed? And then just kinda let them go with building a house on a lot with a shop? Seems kinda like, that's a, seems really awkward way to handle it.
It is a little awkward. It is, because it's an annexation and then the subdivision, you know, we don't want non-conforming uses to continue, and so, there's always a push to make things conform, and so, I think that that's why that proposed condition is there.
Okay.
And additionally, within the subdivision, we allow model home permits to be applied for once the construction or permanent agreement concludes prior to plat, and that provides an avenue for a permit to be applied for prior to plat.
So, applied for would be acceptable?
I'd see that, I see that lot as a custom-home lot, not necessarily a lot that may end up being a model home. I mean, maybe not, but-
The code does provide for model home or homes.
Right, home or homes, yep.
Okay.
It's just one of those things, living through-
Okay.
-the good times and bad times. You, you know, if things go south, they're not projected to any time soon, then you have a non-conforming use, unintended non-conforming use going on longer than were initially intended.
Right.
That's why we have the public process.
Would you be okay with applying for a-
This is your guys' call.
Does that work with staff's process? I guess is probably the better way to put it.
Yeah, the code would support that as an outcome.
So, application. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Seeing none? Okay, go ahead and close it out. Thoughts or comments, anyone? Anyone wanna jump in?
I'll jump in really quick. So, there's been this island of county inside, it's completely surrounded by Post Falls. It's been this donut hole for a long, long time, and one of the reasons that it's remained a donut hole is because the sewer is stopped at 12th Street, at 12th and Greens Ferry, and has never moved north. And so, the entirety of 16th between Seringa and Greens Ferry has just kinda been sitting there, open, this area that even as part of our comprehensive plan, in order for us to try to encourage development in there, we said, "Hey, let's go medium-density in there, try to encourage some development," rather than, you know, kinda trying to grow inwards versus growing outwards and taking up a lot of the prairie on the outskirts. And so, this is, in a lot of ways, a linchpin, because that first 660 feet of sewer from their property boundary south has been a pill no one's wanted to swallow in the last 20 or 30 years, and so, finally, someone's jumping in and doing it, and so, I commend them for doing that. With regards to the annexation, it's infill. It's pretty, I mean, it's, our comprehensive plan says that we should put that as highest priority for annexations. And even though it's a medium-density, in the comp plan, this lower-density R1 zoning is completely appropriate with the neighborhoods surrounding it.
Anyone else? Yay, nay?
I agree. I don't really understand Condition number 11 in order to make a motion, just for the record, so.
Do we need any other clarification, or?
I can do it.
Someone else can do it.
Someone else can, okay. I guess at that point, we would look to entertain a motion, then.
Do the annexation first?
Yes.
That one doesn't require Condition 11.
Say that again?
That one doesn't require Condition 11.
Oh, annexation doesn't-
I believe he might've just-
Put it right back to you.
Thrown it at you, Nancy.
Oh. Okay. Did we have any criteria for the subdivision? Any conditions?
Starting with the annexation.
Annexation.
For the annexation, no conditions?
No.
Correct, okay. I would move to recommend approval of Greens Ferry-Glen annexation, A-N-N-X-0001-2021, finding that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan with a zoning designation of R1.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion or second? Call for vote.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Nancy, well done. So, I guess at this point, we'd be looking for a motion on the subdivision.
I would move to approve subdivision SUBD-0005-2021, finding that it meets the subdivision criteria, adopting conditions 1 through 10 found in the staff report, adding Condition 11, that states, prior to recording the final plat, the owner shall apply for a residential building permit for Lot 18 as shown on the preliminary plat, because I'm sure it'll be a lot in a block at some point. And, that's it.
Second.
Got a motion or a second? Call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlaauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, so moved. That brings us to item E. On this evening's public hearing, we will go ahead and open the Teton Meadows subdivision. Planner Jones to present.
All right, good evening again. Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, presenting Teton Meadows subdivision. The owner is James Dixon, the applicant is Olson Engineering, and the requested action tonight is to review and approve the proposed 3.5-acre, 43-lot subdivision, determining that it meets the requirements found in the Post Falls Municipal Code. Project location, we've seen this recently before. It's on the southwest corner of West Seltis Way and North Creative Way. The land is currently vacant and without significant topography and vegetation. The water provider is East Green Acres Irrigation District. The City of Post Falls is the sewer provider. The applicant is proposing twin home units and one lot that's multifamily units. The proposed density for twin home is 14 units per acre. The code allows for twin home R2 zoning at 18 units per acre, so it's within the max amount of dwelling units per acre. The one multifamily lot, the code allows for 12 dwelling units per acre, and they're proposing 11 units per acre. The property was recently rezoned from industrial to R2 under RZNE 0004-2020, under the name of Creative Homes Zone Change. To the north is unincorporated Cootney County properties across Seltis Way, to the east, industrial. Most of those lots are still vacant on the industrial eastern side, and then to the southwest is the Woodbridge subdivision R1 zoning. Here is the proposed plan. To orient you, north is to the left of the screen. The proposal is showing 42 lots, as mentioned, of the 40, or, excuse me, 43 lots, and of the 43, 42 are for twin homes, and Lot 43, down on the south end here, this large lot would be the multifamily lot. You can see that there are two access points off of Creative Way, here and here, no access onto Seltis Way, and then there's a 24-foot-wide private road that would provide access to all the lots. Additionally, there is a pedestrian corridor, if I can find my mouse on the screen here, there it is, running east-west, so providing access to the sidewalk on Creative Way, and then on the western boundary, providing access to the existing public trail along Woodbridge. The proposed lots range in size from 28 feet to about 30 feet, or, excuse me, 32 feet in width. The twin home standard for minimum lot width is 25 feet. For R2 multifamily, the minimum lot width is 50 feet, and theirs is over 200 feet. Looking at the size of the lots, minimum R2 zoning, bulk and placement standards for the Post Falls Municipal Code calls for minimum twin home sites of 2,400 square feet. Their lots range from about just over 2,500 to just under 5,000 square feet in size. The R2 multifamily lot has a minimum requirement of 3,000. Their lot is about half-acre at about 2,300 square feet, or, excuse me, 23,000 square feet. Looking at the subdivision review criteria, first provision is that water supply has, or, excuse me, that water supply system that is adequate in terms of quantity and quality for the type of subdivision proposed. This development is going to be serviced by East Green Acres Irrigation District, and they have provided a will-serve letter for both domestic and irrigation water. Second criteria is that adequate provision has been made for the public sewage system, and that the existing municipal system can accommodate the proposed sewer flows, and the subdivision is in conformance with the land-use assumptions within the city's water reclamation master plan, and has the capacity to provide service and is willing to provide service. Third criteria is that proposed streets are consistent with the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. North Creative Way is classified as a local commercial and can accommodate the proposed traffic flows. The proposed 24-foot-wide private internal road is acceptable and will need to be signed with no parking signs. The applicant has provided additional interior parking within the site, and then there's also parking along North Creative Way, but not along Seltis. Fourth criteria is that all of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards, have been identified, and that the proposed uses of the areas are compatible with such conditions, and there have been no identified topographic conditions which present hazards. The area proposed for subdivision is zoned for the proposed use, and the use conforms to the other requirements found in the code. As mentioned, this application came through planning and zoning, and then on to city council, and was approved with R2 zoning specifically for this subdivision, under the name of Creative Homes Zone Change. Lastly, the developer has made adequate plans to ensure that the community will bear no more than its fair share of costs to provide services, paying fees, furnishing land, or providing other mitigation measures for off-site impacts to streets, parks, and other public facilities within the community. It is the expectation that in most cases, off-site mitigation will be dealt with through the obligation to pay development impact fees, and as with most subdivisions, impact fees will be assessed on individual building permits to assist in mitigating the off-site impacts to parks, public safety, and streets. Here's the list of agencies that were notified of the subdivision and given the chance to comment of the agencies. Only the Post Falls Police Department commented, and they were neutral. With that, it concludes my presentation on Teton Meadows, and I can take any questions.
So, I, as I was reading this application, I guess that, I understood it to be a request for 3.5 acres into medium-density twin home residential lots. And then you mentioned something about an apartment lot, a high-density. I didn't see that. Is that somewhere in here? Did I miss that? The project description that I have, that I'm reading from, is the applicant has requested to subdivide approximately 3.5 acres into medium-density twin home residential lots, period.
Yeah, it was actually brought to my attention. We knew that they were potentially saving Lot 43 for a multifamily, but I was not aware of the specific project. It was brought to my attention just yesterday that they are going to be developing it with potentially three duplex slots, or, excuse me, three duplex units.
So, then, do we know, so is it still 3.5 acres total?
Totalling, yes. The total site is 3.5 acres, and that Lot 43 is roughly, I think it was 0.53 acres?
Of that.
Of that, so-
So, it would be about three acres of twin homes and about a half-acre of high-density.
Correct, yeah, I think it's like 2.97 acres of twin home.
Okay, okay.
And at the end of the day, you're looking at the zone as R2, and does the minimum lots within that zoning district meet the minimum that's allowed by the zoning? So, that's what we're looking at, is do the lots meet the minimum? So, you do know the twin home lots, specifically, the outcome for those are gonna be meeting the minimums. The other one will go through an administrative site planner view process as far as that site for Lot 43.
Okay, so, we don't, we don't know what the proposed density is on that?
We haven't had application yet, but just speaking with the applicant, they have verbally told us that they are proposing or going to make application at some point for potentially three duplexes on Lot 43.
If we're presented with a subdivision to approve, but we don't know what we're approving in the subdivision, is that really, I mean, is that very responsible?
Well, right now, you don't need to approve housing type, you're just reviewing lot size. So, does the lot size meet the minimums? So does the lot size meet the minimums for R2 zoning? So knowing that lot 43 could potentially be a R2 multifamily, does it meet the minimum bulk and placement standards from Post Falls Municipal Code? And I mentioned that earlier that the minimum width for R2 multifamily is 50 feet and their frontage width is over 200 feet. And then the minimum lot size for R2 multifamily is 3,000 square feet and their property is proposed at 23,000 square feet.
Okay.
So in essence, what you're saying is within R2, it fits.
Within R2, there's multiple types of housing at multiple densities and multiple standards and it fits within one of those R2 bulk and placement standards.
Sure. I mean, it's conceivable that they could put up just a single twin home on that lot if they wanted to.
They could.
Or any number of things allowed.
Currently, they could put a single family there if they wanted, yeah.
Right.
But what they're requesting is allowed within R2?
Correct.
Other questions for staff? No? Okay, thank you. This time we'll bring up the applicant. First off, thank you for your patience of
No, thank you. For your stamina, this has been a marathon. Jeremy Turzuli, I reside in Hauser Idaho, work with Olson Engineering doing project management here in Post Falls. As Laura pointed out, we've been transparent about this from the very beginning when we came for the request for zone change. This is a deliberate attempt to create some entry level affordable workforce style housing. The twin home design, it's going to look from the street as though it's a duplex, but you can see on the pad sites, the party wall, the common wall of that duplex design will also be a property line. These will be able to be sold fee simple. An individual can come in, purchase these, build some equity, and hopefully enjoy the benefits of homeownership. We've kind of run the gamut this evening as far as different products that people are trying to put forth. Like I said, this is a deliberate attempt to help with affordable housing in this community. I did a little research. In addition to project management with Olson Engineering, I'm also licensed real estate agent in Idaho and licensed general contractor. So I have my finger on the pulse of a lot of this stuff. I did a little search on the MLS today and in the city of Post Falls, any single family dwelling under 400K, that was my search criteria, 400,000 max, single family. 13 available listings, three of which were manufactured homes. Under 350,000, we have two available units in the city of Post Falls as of today. So affordable housing, I, something has to be done. And you guys have, everyone, we're in a predicament. This is a pickle with what to do. The general theme is there's a lot of out of state buyers coming to our area. I see that from the real estate side. They can outbid locals on the houses that do come available as they're cashing in their equity in places like California, Western Oregon, Western Washington and moving to our area. My personal and professional opinion on this is that if we try to stunt growth through limiting building permits, denying subdivisions, the demand is going to remain and the supply will continue to go down. There's only one way prices can go in that scenario. And I do have a dog in the fight here that I have three kids, two of which are high schoolers and I'm going to be sending them off to college here pretty soon. And if they go off and get a college degree and want to come back to where they were born and raised, I fear that they won't be able to afford a house. And so they'll wind up renting. And rental prices keep going up as, like we talked about this on the Nicholson one when I provided some data on that subdivision request, or I guess the SUP for the duplex lots over there. Vacancy rates are hovering between 1 and 1/2 and 2 and 1/2 percent. It's just a recipe for prices to keep going up. I'm not going to sit here and blow smoke and say, this is an easy solution and we should just approve everything that comes along. I'm saying this is a deliberate attempt at that. And to your point on that portion to the north, it's just a very odd piece. It did not incorporate into here with any road structure. Additional approaches off of Creative Way didn't seem reasonable. The developer said, let's just carve that piece off, let's hold it. They wanted to have application in place for three duplexes there. The exact same design that's going on here, but they would hold those as an investment. These, the full intention is to sell them off as affordable entry level housing. It was just based on the layout and that shape of that lot, the way it tapers. We read the bulk and placement chart, we're in compliance with the zoning that we requested. And just based on the features of that lot, that's why we went that way. The application, I believe, would have been submitted had the builder not had to relieve his draftsman of duty and hire another one. That's the backlog there. I guess I'm asking you to take my word on that one.
Thank you.
All other conditions, we believe we've met them. Worked closely with fire to give them that additional access in the Hammerhead to the north. Water and sewer will be pulled along the private Galbraith Lane, no parking. We have no problem with any of those conditions. We actually agree with that. Tried to create some additional parking inside as well as the parallel parking along Creative. And for now, that about sums up what I have to say. Like I said, I believe we've been transparent on this from the time we came before you for the rezone request. And the plan has never changed. Try to help create some affordable and entry level housing, maximize this parcel. I believe it's positioned really, really well to access to Interstate 90, pleasant view. The roads can handle the traffic that'll come out there and people will be on the freeway and off to work in a matter of minutes. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for applicant? None?
No, I appreciate you explaining that.
Yeah, and yeah, if you have any other questions, let me know. I'll try to, like I said, right now I'm asking that you sort of, we've been very back and forth with staff on this the whole time and that's what we felt was the best use of that. So you're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone wish to speak in favor?
None.
Neutral?
Just the same four. And then we have the same three in opposition and then this.
Okay. We have Harlan Schlenker again, who is in opposition, does not wish to speak and did not provide comment at this time. No others?
Yep.
That being said, I don't know that there'd be any need for rebuttal. Any questions for applicant staff? Rob's still here? No? Okay, we'll go ahead and close it out. Anybody have any comment?
I think it's pretty straightforward. It meets the review criteria for bulk and placement on all the lots. It's a fairly unique one. We don't get these very often. And so that's probably why it just seems different. Private street's fine. All those things are, read the conditions of approval, those all seem appropriate. And it meets the requirements for subdivision.
Anyone else?
I think it's a good location for the product and I think it's a product that we don't have and we need and it fills a void and good fit.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I like that. It's the affordable housing product that can go in there. But you know, above all, it fits the criteria for the R2 zone.
Yeah. Mr. Ward, anything to add?
Affordable housing is one of the biggest things we need here. With FHA loans topping out at 330,000, the locals can't get financing. It's all outstate money, you know, no matter where it's coming from, it's coming from all over. But it's that and commercials, two most important things I see.
I think there's been some hesitancy with this product, but I think it's going to be an extremely hot commodity for that very reason.
Oh, yeah.
I would entertain a motion at this time then.
I'll do it. Move to recommend approval, Teton Meadows subdivision, SUBD 0004 2021. I think that's consistent with the comprehensive plan and meets the subdivision criteria.
Adopting conditions?
Adopting, oh man, see? I was trying to relieve you from doing another one.
I think it's one to five.
Whatever, yeah.
One through five, yeah.
Adopting conditions, one through five contained in the staff report.
Second? Motion to second call for vote.
Hampi?
Yes.
Blathauer?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gimbel?
Yes.
Steffensen?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to administrative and staff reports.
Well, this is more of a statement of appreciation because, you know, we've been doing two meetings a month for some time. You know, forever we were doing one meeting a month. But I did want to bring up the topic to get a little more dialogue and commentary going forward into June and July. We're continuing to get calls for potential applications. Tonight's nine, it was five on public hearings. We've been doing our best to manage. In the past, you've stated that you would rather have it split up than having eight or nine in one night and staying, you know, until 11 or 12. Just want to know if that's still consistent, you know, if need be breaking these up. Obviously Amber coordinates with you on your availability and we coordinate with the availability of this room. But just wanted to have some opportunity for you guys to share your thoughts on it, you know, on the matter.
I would say my only opinion is, my fear is that if we go for a marathon and try to do eight or nine, I guess the ultimate question is on that seventh, eighth, and ninth public hearing that we have, are we giving them everything that
Yeah, I think we can do a better job if it's fewer a night.
That would be my biggest concern is just the workload and the burnout piece. So I think, to me, the idea of splitting up makes more sense. What are your thoughts?
On the other side of the, when I was doing stuff on the other side in '04, we had public hearings that ran until midnight or 1:00 in the morning and they were awful. They were absolutely awful.
Nothing about that makes, sounds like fun.
No, and it was not good for the public. People would filter out before public comment happened. It was just, in a lot of ways, it probably prohibits proper due process. First, you know, making it difficult for people to, you know, if it's midnight and they have to go to work in the morning.
So you're saying it would take some of the joy out of the planning and zoning?
All of it, every bit.
Nobody wants that. Everybody okay with the idea of
Yeah, I would prefer that.
Would rather do that for sure.
And it should all be temporary, but this will pass.
Promise?
I'm not promising nothing, man.
I mean, we enjoy all of you staff, you do, I mean, no joke, you do a phenomenal job, but let's not take it too far.
I just wanted to ask, kind of following up on John's question. We are looking at two meetings a month continuing. And my concern is, all right, how far out do we continue to push these? Is there, you know, because I, you know, if we continue to get them at the rate we're getting them, you're going to be getting scheduled for August here pretty soon and it's only April.
Don't ask for three.
I'm not asking for three. I'm wondering, you know, if like, you know, we have four or five on tonight. Is it something that would, you know, five or six is more like an appropriate number. Nine o'clock, I understand is late enough, but just kind of looking at trying to find that balance. John does a really good job of trying to keep this balanced. I'm just starting to get concerned with how far out applicants are being pushed.
Well, the, how far
Okay, but it's getting tight.
How far out are we on the administrative subdivisions being administrative?
That probably won't happen for, I'm just going to guess based on where we're at with stuff.
It'll probably affect next year's stuff a lot more than it will this year's. But, you know, June 8th, we already have three scheduled for June 8th.
We actually have four.
Four, well, and then I know somebody, I know something else that probably is going to be highly contentious and we're not going to want to book that up too much because that might be a two and a half hour public hearing in and of itself. And so those are the things we look at at balancing workload. So Bob's inquiry is good to know is like, you know, what's, you know, six, you know, I mean, you know, if need be, you know.
Some of the stuff that's repetitive at the front end of the staff presentations, we could probably cut some time on.
You just need to make sure we remind you of what you're actually looking at.
Ross, pull no punches.
It's cutting some meat out.
We do have to maintain the record.
Chris, if you want to get some more in, we could maybe speed them up a little.
Mr. Sil, I would say that we would trust the direction of the staff and I think that, that Mr. Manley, I think everyone is with an understanding. If we have a very contested one that we foresee that's going to take in a significant amount of time with public comment, then we're going to have to probably have three that night. But if we have others that, you know, that we can systematically move through and we do six.
Well, we never know which one is going to take longer than expected to. There's no guarantee on any of these things.
Do we have any more, do we have very many of the the city presentation kind of things coming up, like city master plan or?
May.
So we've got a couple like the URD stuff and
They should be, you guys have already seen the URD stuff, so I'm hoping that we can go through those relatively quickly in an evening.
I think those
I know Ross would appreciate it.
Lower, I think.
Ross needs to come into a briefing ahead of time so he understands it.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know that anyone's opposed, we got to do what we got to do to serve the community, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I just know we have, we have like a dozen pre-applications already pending for the next couple of weeks, so just looking.
So what do, what do really big, what happens in bigger municipalities where there's?
So I used to work in municipalities that did have a lot of public hearings and they met, they met every two weeks and they did go till midnight or 2:00 AM every two weeks. It was, it was rough. And they also held briefing sessions the day before for about four or five hours.
Do they have a lot of turnover in that?
None.
Fair enough.
Those were volunteer positions?
They were volunteers. They were just like you. They however, recognized the power that they wielded around the city and so
So they're not like us?
They like
Are we not at all like us?
They like to hear them, no, no. Well, we didn't have limitations on public speaking either.
Okay, oh, so, okay, that makes a little difference.
And the applicants did present for as long as they needed to. I did under, I did watch somebody get publicly flogged essentially verbally for about three hours one night, so that was fun, but.
So let's go with
I think that we're doing the right things. I think we've got it balanced pretty well. I don't think that we can technically do it any better with what we're trying to do and just trying to keep it to a reasonable amount of time. I do like three hours. I used to hate getting home at 2:00 AM. It was rough.
Well, again, yeah, I think, you know, obviously we pref the direction of the staff and as things come in, if we have extremely late nights, that's what we have to do, so.
But snacks would actually be nice if we have a late night.
Yeah, yeah.
This is city, so if you want to put your money into a kitty, if you come in, we will go and buy you some snacks.
We're right.
I brought one granola bar and they were all trying to give me a share.
Any other administrative or staff reports?
I don't want to say anything else. We're good.
I mean, if you have anything, sure.
Nope, I have nothing.
Speak now or, okay.
It might lead to other discussions, so we'll just go to
Okay, all right. Commissioners, anything for the good of the order? Nope, no? Okay, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.